Hi. This is the December 14 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is staffed tonight is Diane Lemboski, Bruce Lofgren, and Deb Jones. Members of the public who want to address the commission, they do so during the public hearing or under public communications, you need to raise your virtual hand in order to be recognized. So on an Apple device, you'll find that at the top of your screen on a PC, it's at the bottom. If you're on the phone, it's star nine.
Okay, I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. Let's see. By looking at the attendees, everyone is here except for Steve Huttercheck. We have our, we have a quorum. All our regular members are present. So the first item on business is the public hearing for two special hearings, I mean, public hearings. If you would read the notice how for the meetings.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on December 14th, 2021 at 7:00 PM virtually via Zoom platform to hear the following. Special permit number 37512 Water Street in 261918305500 MDD Zone to convert existing commercial space from commercial use into four residential one-bedroom slash studio units. Review is per section 5.1-848H of the zoning regulations. Factory Square LLC applicant and owner and special permit number 37612 Water Street in 261918305500 MDD Zone to convert existing commercial space from commercial use into 13 residential one-bedroom slash studio units. Review is per section 5.1-8H of the zoning regulations. Factory Square LLC applicant and owner. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar, or it can be attended by visiting www.zoom.us. Webinar ID is 84345877062, password 648974, or by phone 130187158592. Access to electronic equipment at the town hall annex for the purposes of attending or participating in the meeting shall be provided to any member of the public who provides a written request to the Office of Planning and Development not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, in this third day of December 2021 at Groton, Connecticut.
So we'll open up the first application, special permit 375 Factory Square Micro Apartments 12 Water Street. The applicant wished to make a presentation.
Yes, thank you. This is Todd Brady. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Todd Brady. I'm one of the owners of Factory Square. And I'll hopefully be joined by Mark Camo, who is our architect, and Caitlin Tuck from my office. Are they both showing up there, Deb?
They are. I think as long as Mark Camo is Mark C. Yes.
Yes, I think so. Anyway, thank you very much. This, this is an application to convert an existing space at Factory Square, which is which is currently occupied by the Mystic River Chocolate Factory. And we are proposing to convert this at some point for additional what we call micro apartments, otherwise studio apartments, similar to and adjacent to a previous approval for a unit C5 in the adjoining building. Now, I want to be pretty upfront about this. I mean, we made this application and the subsequent application to get in under the wire before the change in the zoning regulations. I had testified at the time about these proposed changes and was very concerned about Factory Square as a property because after the, once the zoning regulations were changed, they would basically have foreclosed our ever converting another part of Factory Square to residential uses because of our inability to comply with the new parking requirements for residential, residential units and onsite. Factory Square was renovated and turned into a mixed-use commercial residential property in the late 70s, and since that time has always relied upon has always relied upon off property parking. We've had a lease with the Mystic Museum of Art for over 40 years and still have that lease and have renewed it continuously over those years. And the, our concern is that neither of these applications are actually occurring because either of these tenants are leaving. The leases that they have are somewhat short-term. They could leave. At the moment, they're not departing the property, but we are trying to protect our ability to convert these properties to residential use because as regards Margaritas in particular, it's a three-story restaurant. If they were to leave, I'm not sure what we would do with, with that parcel. You know, three-story restaurants are not the best thing in the world for operational purposes, and Margaritas and its predecessor Chuck Steakhouse has been there from the beginning of the property. So we're trying to, to secure our ability to convert it to residential apartments if something happens in the future. So the, the initial, the, the current special permit application, as I said, is to take four units. I mean, do you want, how do you want to handle the presentation of the drawings here?
Oh, you mean.
Do you want to have one of your team members share their screen and, you know, just show us what your plan is?
Yeah, we can do that. Caitlin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
You want to share your screen?
Sure. Did you guys give me the ability to share?
Yeah, sorry.
Here we go.
You're the panelist.
There we go. There we go. Can you? Can we go? You guys got it?
We do.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, this is basically the site plan. As you'll see, the area denoted in red at the bottom right side of your screen, that is the space currently occupied by the choc, Water Mystic River Chocolate Company, and otherwise shows the balance of the, the site. The Factory Square site, there's also a survey in this, in this application mix, which shows the existing property from.
Sorry, I'm getting there.
Yeah, that, that's the survey of the, the entire property. Just you can, and you can see the building is down in the sort of the center of, of the screen there. Okay, so we can go back up to the site plan. So you can see in the, you can see in the blue here, above the blue, you see previously approved unit C5. That was the, what we called the micro apartment that was approved some months ago, and as originally envisioned, we were going to do a total of five micro apartments or studio apartments. When the chocolate cafe decided to move in, we we abandoned that plan for the moment, but now have gone forward and done it again. Now, I'm going to add one other point here. When you look at the site plan, there is no site work contemplated basically in this application at all. There is an interface of the courtyard site plan with the previously approved plan for the milestone restaurant, so that the actual area behind Friar Tux, which is recreation space and whatever, will be landscaped and developed in accordance with the mile, the milestone approvals, which will occur clearly way before anything is done with this particular part, piece of the property here. You see that the, there is a small, the area of pervious pavement, which is currently in existent existence out front of the, the proposed apartments. That will all remain as is and will be attended, will be part of the apartments or part of their use factor. There, there basically is no increase in impervious paving in this application, and it just basically is going to stay the same. So there do mean no drainage issues, and there's no, there's no sewer work, drainage work, or anything necessary. We're really just going to, we'd go in here, subdivide the existing space, and you go up to the floor plan on the next plant print, I think. Caitlin? There's, there's the existing space. Well, we'll show it first. There's the existing space where the chocolate factory is currently located. You can see the unit C5, the micro apartment to the right there, and and just below that are the plans for the, the four micro apartments. They range in size from about 286 some odd square feet to, or 270 square feet to 305 square feet. There are new windows that are being added at the rear. Entries all directly off of the walkway into Factory Square, which is the, what we refer to as the South Alley. And and you can see they're, they're compact, very compact units with wall beds in them, full kitchen. And there are no washer dryers in these units at the moment. There was one in unit C5. The basic requirements for washers and dryers, this is something we talked to Bruce about, are that you've got to have one washer dryer for every 10 units under this scenario. If this were to go ahead, we would have a total of 48, I'm sorry, 40
Seven.
Forty-seven units, and we have a washer dryer facility in Building A on the property, and it has five washers and five dryers. So we would have, we would meet the requirements for washers and dryers. There is no, the, the provisions basically address the issue of recreational space, but when you're doing a conversion unit, they do not mandate additional recreation space, and in this instance, we're, we're not really adding any. We're taking advantage of the space that was created, is being created by the milestone restaurant, and and we really didn't have many places to put that. I think there's some benches out on the site, side area and that kind of thing, but not much more than that. And I'm not sure. I've got a whole lot more to add to this. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say? Are you there, Mark? Is Mark been, can he participate? Deb?
Yep, he is here. He wants to speak. He can unmute.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. This, we should have shown, these are elevations. This is the rear or south elevation of the building. Those four, the smaller windows are the bathrooms. The larger windows are in the living room area. And, and then the front is really pretty much unchanged, except that the doors, new doors are installed, and in the center section there, where you see those two doors, that's currently a filled in, wood-filled in opening similar in size to the adjoining and abutting windows, and we're just going to put a door to each one of the apartments in that area right there. And there are also apartments over top, existing apartments over the top of this space. Two-one, one, two-one bedroom units, one on the left and one on the right, and you see the stair on the east side and on the west side. Those, that's, those stairs lead up to the one-bedroom apartments on the second floor. And to the right, you see the entrance to unit C5, the entrance to Margaritas to the right there, and there's a large existing picture window that will be, that's in that unit C5. Same as the big, big picture windows that are in the, the new four micro apartments. Those are all existing.
Todd, can you hear me? Mark here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanted to mention that, that the, the potential commerciality of this space, especially if it goes to a restaurant use or something like that, would be more of an intense re, demand on the parking versus residential use. So the proposed residential use, of course, would be, would require less parking than anything that could possibly go in there otherwise. For the most part.
Anything else? So staff have any comments?
Um, not, not too many. Just want to reiterate that this application was reviewed under regs that were in effect at the time when it was submitted, which does not include the latest comprehensive revisions that you did. Parking requirements, as Mark was saying, actually, this use requires less parking than the commercial use, and they do meet the conversion conditions. They are providing a couple of extra benches as part of their recreation. That's really all I have.
Okay. Does anyone in the public wish to address us on this application?
In order to do so, you'd need to raise your hand if there's someone who does want to address the commission. And I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, then it'll open up to commissioners for any questions. Michael Kane? Is Mike there?
Yep, hang on. There we go.
Interrupting your dinner?
That's quite all right. I was done. I'm just waiting for seconds. I don't really have any questions that are, just a little understanding. It doesn't sound like this is, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but that that Mr. Brady necessarily thinks he's going to do this right away. It sounds like it's just to protect his interests.
That, that's correct, Mr. Kane.
Okay, that's fine. So I understand that. And so then the only other question I have is the use of the word micro apartments. I don't know, staff, if we have that word in our definitions.
Yeah, the chairman raised that at the last application hearing, and I apologize for not correcting our current applications, but it's a term we use. It is not a
No, I understand. I just would like to make sure that we're talking about.
Right, we're talking about a, a one-bedroom unit. That's how we're looking at it.
Or, or a studio, or in this case.
Exactly.
Studio. However, whatever is in our definitions is the word that I would like to use.
Yeah, I think studio is a more appropriate term.
That's fine. So I don't have any other questions.
Hell?
Um, hi. Actually, I don't have any questions. I'm generally okay. I think this is a good time to raise the issue that looking at these and think that units like this as I mentioned, is that this actually diminishes the parking need, and people who would rent those things aren't going to be driving, so they'd already live in town and not driving into town. So everything about this I like. Just want everybody to notice, this is not a bad thing, is that these units such as these, these are tiny little bedrooms with a fold-down bed, which is a great thing. It also is a wonderful thing for short-term rental. I would say that in this location, and that's available, this location, if, even if we're going to call it hotel, by special product, by, we'll have to do that in this location, and this would be a good place to put that if we're, if that were to go forward. So this anything we write farther to limit where, where short-term rentals can happen, I'd want to make sure that places like this would be a place where you could put it, because this wouldn't bother anybody. This would be a great place for that kind of thing.
And I appreciate that comment, Mrs. I will always say from our standpoint, and of course, things can change, or I could get hit by a bus tomorrow, but we have never done any short-term rentals in Factory Square, nothing less than two months, because for us, it's just too management-intensive. You know, it just requires too much hands-on attention to the tenants.
Roger that. And, and I also look for the, what happens if we all get hit by a bus concept, too?
Yeah.
What we put in here is that means nothing if we're not in the picture, so.
Right.
Okay, so I'm okay with all this. Josh also may noticed that while I'm still completely in favor of this, is that what we were talking about in terms of the parking that was, you thought was going to cripple you, we're also still talking about not requiring it necessarily to be onsite, but evaluating the idea of having it off-site that you'd have to have an easement that would require that that particular site would remain parking connected to your, your establishment. So going forward, that was what we're actually looking for, not mandating that it must be onsite or even adjacent. It just be anyplace you else put it. You'd have to have a contract that said forever it would be that parking. But for, for this, in this situation, it diminishes the parking, so I don't think I have any reason to have a problem with it.
Anything else, Hal? Barbara, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, I don't. I sort of assumed that there would be short-term rentals. And I, I have to agree, it's probably a better use. That's all my comments.
So?
No, no comments. Makes a great idea.
Helen, do you have anything to?
No, the only thing I was confused was by, by Todd's quote on the recreational space. I, I know you had made some sort of goat trail on that ledge on the north side. Is that what qualifies as a recreational space?
That's part of it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For goats.
Goats and humans.
Right, both. I, I believe it was a dual-use, Todd.
Rock climb, rock wall climbing. Okay, I had no, no comments or concerns with this application. Does anyone have anything else to state? If not, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for SPEC 375. Is there a second?
Second, I'll second that.
Okay, any, any comments on the motion to close the public hearing? If not, then we'll vote on the motion to close this public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. I'd like to move on then to SPEC 376, which is more micro, or shall I say, studio apartments in Building C. The applicant.
Yes, again, my name is Todd Brady. I'm one of the owners of Factory Square. This is a similar application to the previous special permit application, except it involves a different part of the property. In this case, the area denoted in pink in the bottom left of your screen. This is the current location of the Margarita, Margaritas restaurant. There are also three existing apartments on the first floor of this property on the northeast side in that corner right there. Margaritas is over top of this. This is for an apple, this application is for 13 total apartments. I believe it's eight one-bedrooms and, and five studio apartments. And we are, we're modifying the exterior of the building only in the sense that we are actually opening up a series of previously existing window openings that were bricked up at the time, at some point either when Margaritas moved into the space and/or perhaps when the standard machinery company was there. So we're not putting any new openings in, but we are adding windows back into areas where they previously existed. They were bricked up and they didn't really affect the overall fenestration. This is a, a view from the north side. You can't really see this view very well when you're at the site, because there's a very small alley that runs between this north side of, of building, what we call Building C and Building B, which is actually the immediately adjacent to the boiler room of Factory Square. So if you look at the plan there, go back to the, if you go back to the original plan, Caitlin? Yeah, you see that little alley right there. So that, that first elevation there was of the north, north side of the property. And then if you go to the other, you get the other elevations. All right, so this, this is the, this is the east elevation. This is the area that currently, if you were looking up at the third floor there, there's a very large greenhouse structure, which is the main bar area of Margaritas. We did look pretty hard at trying to preserve that, but there are firewall issues that pretty much prevent us from maintaining the greenhouse without building intervening raid walls between and up into the greenhouse, which our contractors told us would basically destroy the whole structure. So instead, we put in a standing seam metal roof and, and, and more conventional windows that are more like what was there before. And then if you look at the, got another elevation there. This is, this is the west elevation. This area is adjacent to the large ledge rock which comes down, and now this one is definitely goat territory in comparison to out by the parking lot. But I have experience with, with development of properties of this kind where you have a large ledge wall at your rear, and it's amazing what you can do with that aesthetically if you clean it up. It's been something of a dumping ground from our neighbors up on the top of the hill there. So we have our share of, of debris, but we think that in fact, if it's cleaned up, it could be a pretty attractive a view from the apartments looking out that way. And then the other view, this is the west or south elevation. Again, we're opening up a couple more windows that are currently bricked up, and then up in the Gable End there, we've added some more windows. This, this area of butts a single family, or well, actually a multifamily white clavoured residence next door. And if you go to the, the site, you got the site. So what we're doing here, in, in this case, we're actually adding additional recreation space. So this is the first floor. We're gonna, we're, there are fire escapes, metal fire escapes behind Margaritas. You see the small dotted outlines there? Those will all be removed in the new, the new configuration. We don't need those fire escapes because of loading capacities. We have two means of egress from all the apartments, so the existing stair towers inside. So we were going to carve out a pervious patio there. This area is currently impervious. It's a combination of concrete and asphalt. And so our plan is we're going to remove that and put in pervy, pervious pavers and some, some additional plantings or whatever. I will tell you in all candor that, that Bruce Lofgren is a little bit skeptical about our plan here to make this into additional space for the tenants. Partly, I think, because you're sort of shadow, in the shadow of the building, in the shadow of the cliff. But again, I'm not sure that it can't be made a fairly attractive area. I just hope it doesn't become a smoking den of sorts, though that's certainly a possibility. The other thing we're doing is that if you go to the floor plans, we're going to take advantage, those who are familiar with Margaritas, let's see, up to the, go up to the second, via second floor right there. There's an existing, there's the existing outdoor deck, which is off the second floor of Margaritas. When you go up the stairs, we're going to take that entire deck and turn it into a, a space for the building's tenants. Actually, this would be available to any tenant at Factory Square, because the access to the stair tower would be open all the time. So we figured we could potentially put some of the fire pits, furniture, that kind of thing up there and expand. So we're adding, I believe it's 442 square, some odd square feet of recreation space on this deck and, and about 300 square feet at the rear of the property. So we're actually adding to the amount of recreation space. So these are, again, if you look at, start on the first floor, the, the units are all laid out, if you want to scroll up. Right, this is the first floor. You can see the area to the right. That is where their existing three apartments are currently located. We're not going to disturb those, and we're carving out of what is now the prep kitchen and offices of Margaritas. The stair towers that you see are existing, we're adapting them to the current use, and we're also going to put in a new elevator. You see in the back rear west side of the building, there'll be an elevator that will service all of these units in addition to the stairs. We toyed with with making them walk-up apartments, but I think there are a lot of people who wouldn't mind walking up, but maybe not when they were moving in. So we're going to put the elevator in to service those units. So there are I think there are a lot of people who wouldn't mind walking up, but maybe not when they were moving in. So um we're gonna put the elevator in uh to service those units. So there are um two units on the first floor. Oh, one or both are one-bedroom units. And then on the second floor, you've got another, a couple of uh one-bedrooms and some studios. And they actually laid out pretty well. These units of the thirteen units, eleven have washer and dryers in them. So we still stay within the requirements for washers and dryers. Um, and probably the last two units will squeeze a washer, a washer dryer, stack washer dryers into those um when we actually go forward with the actual construction process. Um, and then you go up to the third floor, which is where the uh, the Margaritas bar is. We pretty much, you know, can't quite utilize all the space because you've got roof, um gable roofs coming down on you, but um they're pretty much, uh, what is it, one, two, three, four apartments on the, on the fourth floor. And you can see that the the stairs service all of those units along with the elevators. And uh I also point, wanted to point out that, because Bruce had asked this question about storage, we'll probably build a few more closets into some of these units. The storage area that's located right there at the top is really building storage, not tenant storage uh for maintenance supplies and that kind of things. But we also have storage bins or storage closets in building A. Um, and I would say probably half of them are vacant at this time. So there is additional storage for the tenants uh who move in here. But you know, these are small, um a little bit bigger than the the, the uh other application, but um they're, they're not huge apartments. They vary in sizes. A three hundred and five square foot one there, you see, then there's a six hundred and sixty-seven square foot one. So some of them are are decent sized, but the whole idea is efficiency and um and we think that they, well, we know there's strong demand for one-bedroom apartments um in any event. And there are a lot of people who would maybe couples are one thing, but a lot of other people who just would just as soon have their own place. So we're trying to make that uh more readily available in this instance.
Anything else or?
Uh, well, I, I'm sorry, I would, this, this also, this, this um, this proposal pretty dramatically reduces the parking load, um because Margaritas is currently, you see a total decline in parking of thirty-one point one, thirty-one point seven spaces at the minimum or forty-seven point eighty-two at the maximum uh required parking, because uh you know, Margaritas uh consumes a lot uh or demands a lot of parking for its uh current tenants, which is all detailed in the density, parking density plans that are attached to these applications. So, so this one is a a major decline in in parking uh from the current use. And and as I pointed out before, I mean, if this space is not a restaurant, it wants to be, it wants to be apartments. It really wants to be apartments. And you know, Factory Square is a unique property. I mean, you can't, you couldn't replicate it today. You couldn't build it today under current zoning, I don't think. And uh it's uh, it's highly desired by people who want to live downtown. Actually, we have a guy moving in Friday from California who's driving his U-Haul. He sold his car. He is not going to have a car. And he's making a big deal out of it. He said that I'm gonna walk everywhere and have my groceries delivered. And I guess an occasional Uber drive. So we'll see how he makes out. He's an artist, so we'll see.
Interesting. Any, any, any additional items? Can move then to staff. Bruce, do you have any input?
Yeah, then thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Lofgren from planning staff. Um, I do not have too much to add. Um, this is pretty similar to the last public hearing you just heard. Um, I did just want to note that the mailings were in order. Um, I checked them and everyone was properly notified. Um, I was going to mention, mention the drastic reduction in the parking requirements. Um, but but Todd mentioned that um because of the exterior improvements here, um I I believe this application will also need to receive um historic district commission approval.
That's correct.
I I don't believe it has yet, but the, that'll have to come after this. Um, other than that, um, Mr. Brady addressed the washer and dryer requirements, how they are in most of the units. So that is in conformance. Um, yeah, and then they're adding the uh community and recreation space outside. Um, I I am skeptical of, you know, how nice that back alley will be, but it's certainly redeemed with that second floor deck that'll be used by the, by the residents. So I hope I am proven wrong about the back area, but um the the deck will certainly be a good addition. And and really, any additional community recreation space is a plus. Um, so yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's really all I have to add on this one.
Okay. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on this item? Does anybody have hands raised to?
See. Nope, I do not see any hands.
Okay, we'll move on to the commission. And uh for a sort of this, I'm, Kevin, do you have any any questions or comments?
Um, I don't. I mean, it seems like a nice continuation on. And I think the comment the, the applicant made is appropriate, you know, because old buildings are mystic and continue to use them at optimum levels and, you know, we'll always support that. So good work.
Yeah. So, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no comments. Thanks, Jeff.
Barbara?
No comments.
No comments, no questions, I assume. Hal?
No, I, I think I'm fine with it for the most part. In fact, I'd even go farther to say that it's kind of housing that would be greatly appreciated. Um, at least for the uh, for the most part. I, I'm really not keen on, by the way, aside, windowless bedrooms makes me crazy when you don't need to do it. Uh, and I think that was just to make the one-bedrooms out of, instead of having them be uh efficiencies. And I I see no need of of that, by the way, because there's certainly a market for both, having lived in Portland, Oregon, where what made it wonderfully livable was have thousands of efficiency apartments of all kinds and sorts built into whatever kind of building was available, and it was terrific. So you you could do that here just the same. But uh, so I think this would be a a perfectly good addition. I'm sorry to see, if in fact Margaritas ever goes, this would be a perfect thing to do. And maybe we just have to rely on the other thirty-four restaurants that we have. Oh, and I I think frankly, that little courtyard back there would probably not be a bad little place, uh because around noon, the sun is going, it faces due south, right? So it actually does get washed with sun once.
Yes, it does, that's true.
Once a day, so better than sun. So it'll be okay.
De-warming on a windy day, overly protected.
That's true.
Mike?
Uh, the only, um, we're adding a elevator to this building. Is, does that make these units handicap accessible?
Well, they, 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 all of, all of these units, um including the ones in the, the prior hearing are are accessible um by a wheelchair. And Mark, you can, you want to address that?
Uh, yeah, so there, there is, um, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Uh, so, so there's, there's an elevator in the building. But there, uh, there, there's three kinds of units accessible and then type A and type B. And and we would satisfy all of those.
Okay, no, I wasn't trying to, I just wanted to uh mostly just so that, because I noticed the stairs in the front and I believe that there's a ramp there already. I just wanted to make sure that, that it was, you know.
It would be, yep.
Okay, so that was one thing. And then we were talking, if I could just hear it again, because I want to make sure the storage area we're at, we're getting four hundred and forty-two square feet? And then three hundred feet of rec space? Is that correct?
It's four forty-two is the square footage of the deck area, uh, Mr. Kane. So those are all recreational spaces. The three hundred in the back and the four forty-two on, on uh the outside deck. What we said about storage was that um Bruce had asked us to see if we could add some more closets to some of the units, which um I talked to the architect on that and we can do that. But that we also have alternative extra storage in building A. There are a series of storage closets which can be rented. Um, and currently about half of them are available, so.
Okay, alright. Uh, and now, so my new uh little thing that I'm looking for in this world are, is bicycle storage. So are these closets that you're talking about, would they be big enough for something like that?
Well, I think in the milestone he- hearing, we pointed out that we have two bike in interior bike storage um rooms or racks or areas in in the existing building A.
Okay.
And there are bike, there are some bike racks outside of this space here, and there's some bike racks over alongside building A when you come in the other alleyway.
Yep, no, I remember.
And you know, we, we had talked to Bruce about putting some bike racks in the back there by the recreation area, but we could still do that, but he wasn't crazy about the idea.
Mostly, I'm look, I'm hoping, I mean, it's not in our regulations yet. Uh, but I, I'm hoping for indoor storage and especially for your new tenant. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm uh, uh, you know, I'm not gonna go any further than that. I just, that's something that I uh think that we're gonna need. And maybe when this all comes about, that's something that we can think about then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a good thing to shoot for. I I definitely do.
I think you'll get good tenants.
Yeah.
That one. Alright, thank, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, I just had one question. On the interior arrangement of these apartments, how firm is that? Are they just sort of a rough idea? Or are they fixed?
I, I think it's, I think you could characterize it as a, as a, as a rough idea and subject to change for sure.
Because I, I, the reason why I ask that is one of them, I think it's the second floor. One, you have the entryway into the apartment into the bedroom, which to me doesn't sound too realistic.
That one over the right there?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, and we talked about that at length. Um, and of course, the issue is the, the, the living room wants to be on the east side and not buried in.
No, I, I understand that, but I just, I just meant that there probably should be something done, done with that. So you like put up a, a small curtain or something there. You know, just to separate it.
No, I think that's, that's, that's a good point.
Or do something, or maybe it's a Murphy bed in there, but it just seems unrealistic.
Yeah, I, I agree. Good point.
But if it's just a rough idea, I would think when you came to actually building it, if you did, you'd find, figure out what to do with it. But it wouldn't affect the approval of the uses.
I suppose we could swap the kitchen for the bedroom and put the Murphy bed in the living room. Is that better or worse? I don't know.
Yeah, well, you can make that decision later.
Yeah.
I mean, we're really just approving the use, not the.
Yeah, no, I, I, I took this to be uh probably the most intensive res, uh, you know, use as far as residential goes. And then if Mr. Brady were to come back, I'm assuming with two-bedroom units, where that would be a less intensive use. Or whatever, you know?
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, you can fit it in, but it seems, might be tough to rent. Alright, does anyone else have any questions or concerns? So I guess we are ready to close this public hearing. Does staff have any reasons why we shouldn't close or the applicant? Or any of the commissioners? If not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for uh S P E C three seventy-six. The studio apartments and building C. All those in favor, say aye. All right, I mean, we need a second for some.
Second.
Trying to keep things moving tonight, so we don't go too late. Moving second. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll, oh, did you have something?
No, no, sorry.
Then uh we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next item is consideration of public hearings. We have uh S P E C three seventy-five, Factory Square, Studio Apartments and Building D. We have a prepared motion for that. Does it, has the applicant uh seen these two motions then?
Yes, we have.
Has he had any comments, concerns?
No.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission have any problems?
I do not.
I wanted to make a couple of editorial changes on the first uh, on S P E C uh three seventy-five, the paragraph for the the commission finds a site plan should be deleted, so it's identical to the other one. And I thought for the, the heading that we should change the uh, the motion to, might as well use Factory Square. I'm gonna say Factory Square, twelve Water Street, to convert a commercial space into individual for residential one-bedroom slash studio. Rather than the Factory Square Apartments. I don't think that's really the right term. So I'll make a motion then to approve special permit three seventy-five Factory Square, twelve Water Street to convert a commercial space into in, for residential one-bedroom slash studio apartments. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that this application complies with the objectives of section three point three dash two B of the zoning regulations in that it will, and this is a change, maintain the unique qualities of Mystic and is in keeping with the goals of the Plan of Conservation and Chain and Development. The commission also finds that this application complies with a special permit criteria in section nine four dash six of the zoning regulations in that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the Mystic area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts, and does not conflict with the purpose of these regulations. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Smooth and second. Any discussion on the motion? Was that official Congress discussion? So, so hearing none, then we'll vote on, on the motion to approve special permit three seventy-five. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to the second public hearing. This one uh does anyone have any concerns with the second motion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, any commissioners? Not then I'll make a motion to approve special permit three seventy-six Factory Square. That's a change with what was there. Factory Square, twelve Water Street, to convert existing commercial space in building C into thirteen residential one-bedroom slash studio units. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that this application complies with the objectives, the section three point three dash two point B of the zoning regulations in that it will maintain the unique qualities of Mystic and is in keeping with the goals of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Commission also finds that this application complies with the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations in that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the Mystic area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts, and does not conflict with the purpose of these regulations. Is there a second?
Second again.
Moving second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. And the next, we'll move on to the next uh item of business is approval of minutes of previous meetings, which is minutes of November ninth. Minutes of November ninth twenty twenty one. I'll make a motion to approve the. The minutes of the meeting of November ninth twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and second, does anyone have any corrections? None, nobody has any? I have just one series of corrections, same thing on the. The voting for emotions. You have Kevin Fitfall should be removed since he's not a voting member. In all these boxes.
Right now, I have not been voting.
I know, I'm not questioning that. I don't want to get caught in a legal situation.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then uh we'll vote, vote. On the motion to approve the minutes of November ninth meeting. As corrected, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Using my paperwork. Next uh item on the agenda is public communications. If anyone on the commission have any. Communications, they want to identify the staff, have any? Anyone in the public wish to address us?
No hands raised.
Uh, Jeff, um. Neglected to mention, I've gotten a couple of questions about. The data center that's supposed to be up on one seventeen and off of Flanders Road. Is there any information that we have about that?
Only what's on the website in terms of development agreements. We don't have any applications.
Thanks.
Yeah, I did have one item that uh received uh communications from, or a memo from Dick Fitzgerald. Regarding uh public access to water. Front uh properties, which were sent out today. But no one in the public is wants to address us tonight.
Uh, that's correct.
Quiet. Holiday season. Okay, we can move on then to next item subdivisions. We have Mystic Hollow one fifty four Sandy Hollow Road with a request for bond. Reduction.
Right, this was a six lot subdivision on Sandy Hollow Road, um approved in two thousand and eighteen. Um, two of the lots have been developed and their driveway aprons are in and the developer has asked for the reduction. Um, and the, the bond amount that covers those two lots.
Does anyone have any? Questions over the. This item or the bond reduction?
Does this uh finish it up?
Nope, these are the first two lots.
Oh, okay, all right.
Do you know if there are any building permits for other lots right now?
I don't know.
Typically, is that what happens when developer um slowly sells or come back and ask for this type of thing? Is it a natural request in any way?
It, it, yeah, it is. I mean, this is a small subdivision, so the bond amounts are very much. Um, typically, if it's a, a larger subdivision with a road, we'll see a significant amount um for the first reduction. Um, this developer is handling it a little bit differently, and so as the lots are COed, he's asking for reductions.
Yeah, I've never seen that happen before. It's always the ninety percent for everything.
And that's what we're going to do. He was confused with this. We are going to hold the last ten percent of the initial bond. Um, for one year after all of the public improvements have been completed.
Okay, but he has requested these. So I'll, I'll make a motion then to approve a. Three thousand two hundred and fifty dollar reduction of the public improvement bond for Mystic Hollow subdivision. Sandy Hollow Road due to completion of driveway aprons for lots three and four. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing then we'll. Vote on a motion to re, for the bond reduction for these two driveway aprons. All those in favor say aye. Any abstention, any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. All right, next uh, next item is uh site plans. We have a site plan for factory square. Studio apartments on S I T twenty one seventeen. The staff have anything else to add for, other than what we've talked about so far?
I do not. Um, the applicant is here as well if he wants to make a brief presentation on the site. I know.
Unless we have questions. Does anyone else on the, does anyone on the commission have any questions? Additional questions for the site plan? It weren't covered by. None, previous.
I do not.
Hearing none, then I'll make a motion to approve. Site plan twenty one dash seventeen. For factory square. Building D, studio apartments, twelve water street with the following modifications. One technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second? Moved in seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the, on the motion to approve site plan twenty one seventeen. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. Uh, the motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to the next site plan twenty one eighteen. Which is for the factory. Square apartments and buildings C. The staff have any additional input for this item? In addition to what we already discussed. Does anyone on the quick commission have any additional questions or concerns for this site plan? Okay, then, hearing none, then I'll make a motion to approve site plan twenty one dash eighteen. For factory square. Apartments, twelve water street with the following modification. One technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and seconded. Sorry, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion to, for site plan twenty one eighteen. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And the next item is a site plan twenty one dash fifteen. Triton Square fifty five Sealy School Drive. The applicant present?
We are.
Would you like to introduce yourselves and then make them? Overview of your application?
Can I ask just one thing?
Yes, Diane.
Anthony, there's a, another Tom that's here. In the participants, I'm not sure if he's part of your team.
Um, certainly about Tom Daley, um. Don't believe we had another Tom. I have to go back and look at the list.
Okay, I have Tom Daley, but not another, but there's another Tom. I'm not sure who it is.
Uh, Tom's our only Tom, um, but I do have a Tim.
Tim.
I'm here. Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you, Tim.
Yes. Yes, I got a Tim. Okay, let's move on.
Okay, um, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, my name is Timothy Herbst. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Marino's Able and Schellenberg. With offices in Orange, Connecticut. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, Donmar Residential LLC. Uh, for site plan approval as noted on your agenda. Uh, before I give brief remarks, Mr. Chairman, I just want to introduce. First, my client, Anthony DeJoy, who is a member of Donmar Residential LLC, who will be speaking this evening. Also with us is Tom Daley from SLR Consulting, who will be discussing uh engineering on the site as well as current conditions. Uh, also from SLR is David Dickinson, who is the landscape architect, who will be able to answer any questions you might have on landscaping. Uh, David Sullivan is here on traffic, and then last but certainly not least, Ray Sullivan, our architect, is also here to answer any questions that you have. Um, as you know, um, this has been a long time coming, and this is the final step. Uh, in a, in a very long approval process. I want to first thank your staff. Uh, they have been nothing short of professional in working with us to get to this point in offering recommendations on the application. Uh, as noted in the application that has been submitted and reviewed by your staff. Uh, the application will allow the construction of residential units on approximately fourteen point zero five acres. On property previously known as the William Sealy School. Um, I will note that in accordance with Groton's two thousand nineteen Plan of Conservation Development. It says, and I quote, as housing needs change in the future due to the changing age composition of the region and the state. Groton can continue to help address these needs. Groton can provide for wide diversity of housing densities and types. Due to the availability of water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure and other amenities, close quote. Um, arguably, a diversity of housing options in the town was a key recommendation in your P O C D. And we believe that the proposed site plan uh, uh, application advances these noble objectives. Um, so with that being said, what I would like to do now is to turn this over to Tom Daley, who will walk you through the technical side. As well as the other experts who are here this evening, and then I will close it out. From there, Tom, take it away.
Sure, uh, for the record, Tom Daley and um Diane, will I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes.
Tim, and.
Oh, great.
Tom, before, Tom, before you get started, I just want to uh introduce myself on camera. Um, I also have a short PowerPoint that I'll, I'll just run through to kind of give you guys a, um.
Let's see.
Can everybody see that slide?
Yep.
So, good evening, everybody, and um I want to thank you for being here tonight. My name's Anthony DeJoy, and I'm a member of uh Donmar Residential. Know the agenda packed, and it's uh gonna get a little late, so I'm gonna keep my presentation as brief as possible. Um, before I pass the baton on to the design team to kind of get down into the nitty gritty. Um, but before I do that, I just wanted the opportunity to introduce myself, uh, my company, and give you a brief overview of the project and some of its merits. Um, like I mentioned before, I'm a member of Donmar Residential, but more importantly, I'm the project executive for Triton Square. Um, our team has worked on this project for the past two years, and the application that you see before you tonight. Is a culmination of an extensive design review process over those two years. Um, a little bit about the company. Donmar uh was founded by my father, uh Mario and my mother Donna back in nineteen eighty eight. And um today we remain a small family business. I mentioned the family business aspect because. I feel it's important to note that the reputation of our business, um, and that of our family kind of go hand in hand. I want to convey that we're not a uh build it and bolt developer. We have an impeccable reputation with our customers, vendors, contractors, in each and every one of the towns that we operate in. And over our thirty-three years in business, we've seen booms and busts, but we've never failed to complete a project for any circumstance. Together as a family, we've built and developed thousands of residential units across four states. And our goal is always to deliver a quality product that's a net positive to the community and Triton Square. As many of you know, this property uh was formerly the William Sealy School. Uh, the project represents a unique opportunity to redevelop an existing site into a state of a, a state of VR complex that. A is gonna fulfill a desperate housing need in town and B produce tax revenue where it did not exist before. Triton Square is gonna be a three hundred and four unit luxury apartment complex. And what you'll notice as we get further into the presentation is that the property consists of three interconnected buildings surrounding a large courtyard. From the lobby, you can ask, access anywhere within the three buildings via the two sky bridges um that connect them. Uh, this was done for two reasons. One, to create that luxury hotel resort feel for the residents. And two, so that the amenities are always accessible, um, no matter what the weather is or what time of day. Uh, the typical apartment complex is three or four buildings laid out with that central courtyard. And it doesn't really bring in that community aspect where um everybody can kind of walk down into the lobby. Sometimes if it's snowing, you have to trudge across the parking lot and, and people tend not to like that. Um, Triton Square. Was designed to blend campus style living with a hotel feel, uh, which is unavailable anywhere in the New London market. Um, so basically, the main entrance of this building is the lobby, and it's a fourteen thousand square foot resident, resident lounge. Um, and there you'll have the full suite of uh indoor amenities. You have indoor golf simulators, uh, we work stations and private offices. Those have become very popular over the last uh year or so. Uh, where more and more people are working from home, and they find it more difficult to get a little bit of uh free space away from either other significant other or their children. Um, another big thing is uh a gym. People like to stay, stay in shape. Um, so we'll have Peloton systems, um, on demand fitness courses, um, really the, the full suite of uh, of. Of exercise equipment. Um, Amazon package concierge. Uh, when you see the amenity layout, you're gonna notice that there's an actual entire room dedicated to packages. Um, you can't believe the amount of patches that will come into a building like this. Uh, the amount of online shopping that's done now is, is absolutely stunning. Um, for those of you that are musically inclined. It's very, very difficult to practice a musical instrument in an apartment and remain friends with your uh neighbors. So again, we have music rooms for, for. Uh, people to practice it. So I just want to reiterate that the amenities that are here are gonna be state of the art. Um, anything that you can think of is there, whether it's the outdoor heated pool, um, chaise lounges, cabanas, everything. Everything is there. Um, before I move on for this, from this slide, one thing that I do want to mention. And you'll see it later on in the site plan, and um you'll have the opportunity to ask questions about it. Is we do have a playground that's open to the public. Um, we are maintaining parking spaces for the public, and we are opening the walking trails and the dog park as well to the public. Um, to kind of give um public access to the site. One of the things that came out, came up throughout the design process. Um, where some of the, some of the local neighbors were a little bit concerned because they lost a school. The school had playgrounds and um. Their children like to frequent those areas. Um, a quick rundown of the U X and rents, um, obviously out of three hundred and four um units, forty-three are gonna be studios. One hundred and eighty-four are gonna be one bedrooms, and seventy-seven of those units will be two bedrooms. Um, this mix is one that was, that we hired an outside firm to come up with. Um, it's a. Um, it's a mix that they believe is best suited to serve the future and current residents of Groton. Um, if you look at the section, the table where I have projected rents. We're projecting about fifteen hundred and fifty for a studio. Seventeen hundred for a one bedroom. And twenty-two hundred for a two bedroom. Now, you may say that this is high, but when you actually look at it on a per square foot basis, these units are very comparable. What exists at Pleasant Valley Apartments and what also exists at similar apartment complexes like the ledges. Um, another thing to take into account is that these rents are going to be. A year and a half out from, from, from construction. So again, those are future projected rents. The demand for units, um, the demand is going to come from the commuting worker of Groton. Um, I'm sure that everybody here tonight has heard the statistic, sixty-seven point nine percent, and it's about twenty thousand people commute into the town each day. Um, this number is only going to grow as Electric Boat, Pfizer, and the ancillary service companies that serve them continue to grow. And, um, probably about a year and a half ago, um, our company had its own, um, demand study done. And the demand was around a thousand units over the next decade. Um, back in July of this year, or September, actually, it got published, Groton had their own study, uh, done. And that number has actually increased to five thousand. So over the last year and a half. The demand for apartments within Groton. Has gone up fivefold. Um. This is due to several factors. Um, number one, housing is not recovering ground as it has, has elsewhere in the state. The vast majority of the housing was built between nineteen seventy and the early two thousands. And that doesn't really need the, the needs of the current generation of workers. Um, number two. Population projections through twenty twenty-four show that. Um. Households with income of less than seventy-five thousand are going to shrink in Groton. And households making over seventy-five thousand dollars are going to increase, and particularly the range of one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are going to increase, and that's actually. Very good for the town. Um, it's something that you don't typically see in Connecticut at the current moment, and it's something that's pretty unique. Um, almost anywhere across the country. Um, so all those factors are significantly driving demand for units within the town of Groton. Um, tax revenues. Upon the certificate of occupancy, um, Triton Square will become the town's fourth largest taxpayer. Um, some of the numbers that you see up on screen, um, eight hundred thousand dollars right up front, uh, permit fees, uh, whether it be. A building permit, HVAC, uh, plumbing, electrical, those mechanical permits, along with CO fees and. And other building permit fees are going to total over eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's an upfront. Um, fee paid to the town for those permits. Um. Then going forward, the property is going to generate an excess of eight hundred thousand dollars in annual property taxes once it's complete. Um, so that eight million dollar figure over the next decade actually doesn't really even take into account, um, escalation. Another number that people tend to overlook with large properties like this. Our motor vehicle taxes, motor vehicle taxes are actually significant. Um. This property is projected to. Um, bring in another hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually in motor vehicle taxes to the town of Brown. So what we have here is we have a project that's going to bolster the grand list by over forty-five million dollars. And over the next decade is going to produce ten million, over ten million dollars in revenue for the town. So this project has been in the work for, um. For several years, and it's taken an immense amount of planning and design work to get to this stage. The design team on this project are the top professionals in the industry. And as they go through the site and building design, you're going to come to see that this project fulfills the town's site plan objectives. Economic development objectives and the design objectives. All while maintaining public health and safety and minimizing the impact on surrounding neighborhoods. Um, again, I thank you for the opportunity to. Present this evening and for the opportunity to work in the town of Groton. Now I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Tom Daly, the lead civil engineer on this project.
Thank you, Anthony. Let me just share my screen. So Anthony, I think you have to stop sharing. Perfect. Let me just try to do that. So, good evening. Uh, hopefully, everybody can see an aerial photo of the site. Uh, for the record, my name is Tom Daly. I'm a professional engineer with the, uh, firm of, uh, SLR Consulting. And we're really excited to before, to be before you this evening to present this exciting project. But while everybody does, uh, is probably quite familiar with the site. Um, we always like to start from the beginning and, uh, get everybody orientated. So. Um, this is an aerial photograph of the site as, uh, Attorney Herbst indicated. It's about fourteen acres. The yellow is the outline of the site. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, on this particular map, north is pointing to left. So along our southern border, we have I ninety-five. Um, to the, uh, west, we have, um, uh. Yes, uh, sorry, to the, uh, to the east, we have, um, Senkow Ave and single family residential. And we also have, uh, water tanks. This is actually an aerial photo where, uh, one tank was still there, and they were putting up a second one. So. I think there's no, there's only one tank out there today, but we happen to get a, uh, Google image where it was showing both. Um, to the north, we have, they're really, it's really undeveloped land, um, but they are currently occupied by single family homes. And then to our, um, northwest, we have some commercial activities, and then once again, some vacant land. Um, as Anthony indicated, this is the, uh, former location of, um, uh, Sealy School. Uh, we as a firm were proud to be part of, uh, the new schools that are, uh, are now currently occupied, West Side Cutler. And then gotten, uh, middle school. Those were fun projects to work on. So it's a little interesting to actually get. Um, to get involved on the, on a different element, um, as we kind of repurpose, uh, this site. Um, the site is currently zoned CR, and virtually everything, most, uh, good portion of this, the, uh, the, uh, land on this. Aerial photo is also zoned CR, except for, um, Senko Ave is zoned R twelve. As part of our work, we, uh, did a full topographic survey of the property. And to give you a context, so once again, we have north pointing to the left. And, uh, to give you some, uh, details on that. So the highest point of the site is, uh, located on our, which is, you know, the bottom of the page here, which is our eastern border. Uh, that's the, um, that's about elevation one seventy-seven. And it generally, it slopes all the way to the west. Which is, uh, the green area you're seeing is actually the inland wetlands that were flagged on the site by our soil scientist. Uh, the site does not have any flood plain on it, but there is a low-lying, um, wetland on, on our four, on our, on the, on the project. Um, uh, north. The site, I would have to say, uh, is generally about one-third developed and about, uh, two-thirds, um, wooded. One line I would, and I'll bring it up again later in my presentation. But from a zoning standpoint, you can see a light green line located in the bottom left-hand corner of the, the map. That is, um, your, uh, water protection district, um, boundary. That comes off of your zoning map, and we'll get into the details there, but that's a, uh, item that is under your peer review, and we'll go through that. But. To get back again, so our highest point of the site is really where the school is. That's elevation one seventy-seven. And as we move all the way down to the wetlands, um. It's about, uh, elevation one fourteen. So we have this kind of upper plateau, and then as we get behind the building, it does, it tends to slow. It sloped down. With that, I'm going to, I'll still have controls, but, uh, I'm gonna pivot over to David Dixon from my office. David is our lead, one of our lead. Uh, landscape architects, and he'll walk you through the plan, and then I'll come back, uh, after David to walk you through some of the, uh, the utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, again, David Dixon, I believe I was, uh, my last name was mispronounced. It's D I C K S on and not Dickinson. Um, so, uh, very happy to be here tonight. As Tom said, this is a great project. As a landscape architect, uh, we take on a lot of different aspects. From at the conception of a project like this. And we don't always end up with things. We, sometimes we end up shoehorning, uh, projects in. That's not the case here, and I think that you'll see that, uh, from the circulation. Around the building. The way the parking, uh, is distributed very evenly around the building. Um, the, as you come up the entrance drive, whether you're turning to the right or to the left, all of the internal movements, uh. Vehicular movements have been sized to accommodate, uh, Groton's largest emergency vehicle. So there's, uh, as you would come up into the site, uh, from Walker Hill. You enter an area where there's a pickup and drop-off. There's, that's going to be a, a brick paved, um. Uh, ellipse or circle right there, like a roundabout. Uh, with a landscaped island in the middle. Uh, and there's about ninety parking spaces, uh, in this area as well. As we continue down along the, uh, west border, uh, just to the east, or just to the east of, uh, Senko. Uh, we have a parking lot, linear parking lot with about a hundred spaces. Uh, and then to the, uh, south, uh, is bare, basically a, a three terrace, uh, parking area. The terraces are not significant, but they do step. So in other words, the, the, uh, upper tier. As, and then the middle tier, and then the lower tier down toward the playscape and the dog park. Which are identified, uh, right there where Tom is, is pointing. Uh, we, we discussed also that, uh, public amenities would also include the walking trail. Uh, through the wooded area as, uh, Tom is identifying now on the site plan. Well, let's talk for a moment about, uh, landscape requirements, uh, in the parking lot. Um, this sometimes can be a challenge as well. In this case, uh, we far exceed the requirements of the town. Ten square feet per space is what's required. We have fifty square feet per space for a total of just over seventeen thousand square feet. It's pretty generous. Um, and it's nice to see that. Uh, one of the things that allowed us to do that was the, uh, separation of the parking terraces. Uh, with those long linear spines, uh, nice curve, very easy, very intuitive movement for vehicles. As a, uh, maneuver through the site. Um. Let's, uh, Tom, can we go into the, um. Into the interior. Well, of course, we, we talked about this before, and we can get into the detail of this. This, I believe, is our landscape, is our layout plan. Uh, very detailed with dimensions, uh, accordingly. The next plan is part of the set as well, and that is the landscape plan. Uh, let's stay here for a minute. We'll just dwell on this for a moment, because I think this is very important as well. There's over two hundred trees proposed, uh, on this property. And there's a, a very nice mix and blend of, uh, of a lot of native trees, maple, dogwood. Uh. Has honey locust. Red cedar. Sweet gum, sour gum. Spruce, pine, cherry, oak. Arborvitae and, uh, linden. Uh. And again, as a landscape architect, we don't always get to, uh, put in as many, uh, you know, we don't create an arboretum. Typically, but in this case, uh, and shown here on the planting palette. You'll see the variety of trees, uh, that will be proposed here. There is screening that is being proposed along the, uh, west side. Uh, adjacent to Senko. Uh, we can talk about that momentarily. There are a couple of retaining walls in there. Along with a six-foot-high vinyl-clad fence, uh, to create those screens. Uh, and all the arborvitae that are proposed in here will go in at eight to ten feet high at the time of planting. Tom's identifying, excuse me, Tom's identifying, uh, the arborvitae, uh, the green giant variety, which is, uh. Uh, very generous. It gets, it gets tall, also gets fat. Let's move on to the next, uh, slide, Tom. So as Anthony had mentioned, and I, and I'm sure that Ray is going to talk, uh, about his, his courtyard. This is a fantastic space. Um, I almost couldn't believe it when we, when we started working on this space, that we had such a space, uh, allocated. For amenities and, um, activities. There's a generous-sized pool. Uh. Near, uh, where Tom is identifying chaise lounge chairs, pergolas, uh, grill, growing, uh, pits. Uh, grilling stations. Uh, we have, um, several outdoor rooms. And I refer to them as rooms because they really are. Uh. Those are areas where you can, uh, get off, get a little bit more intimate, a little bit more secluded. The landscaping surrounds those areas. And in some cases, um, below seat wall. But those areas. Uh, include fire tables. Uh, teak benches, side tables. There's pergolas. Um. And, um. Uh, also TV and movie, outdoor TV movie screen, uh, as well. But the, the, the main point I think that is worth taking away here is the quality of materials is top-notch. Uh, there's no expenses to be spared in development of these spaces and, and in the, the forward thinking. Of what this space could be, uh, in the future. So it's very exciting, uh, to look at these, um, these, uh, site elements on this plan. Uh, let's go on to the next slide, Tom. So we made mention of the, uh, of the retaining walls in the screening along the west side of the property. Uh, we cut three sections. Uh, through these areas. The first is, uh, the most, uh, goryly section is at, uh, sixteen Senko Avenue. Here, there's a wall. And a, and a single fence at the top. The wall, in this case, varies from height of two foot to six foot. Uh, and the screen fence on the top is six foot. So the total grade change, including from the, uh, the bottom of the wall to the top of the screen fence is about ten feet. That's the round of screening that is proposed, and that does not include. Uh, the height of the, uh, of the evergreen trees. Which will grow over time. The next slide. Uh, takes us to thirty-two Senko Avenue. Here we have twin walls. Separated by. Uh, two, separated by about ten feet. Each wall is about six feet, five foot. Total wall height between the two walls is eleven feet. When you add the six-foot fence at the top of the hill, top of the grade, you're looking at about a seventeen-foot grade change. And that does not include the, uh, the height of the tree as it grows. The next slide, it gives us a section through, uh, fifty Senko. And here we have a single wall. It's about five foot tall. And, uh, and then natural grade that goes continues up behind the, uh, evergreen screen. Uh, for a total wall height or total grade change of about fourteen feet. That wraps up the, uh, the site plan at this point, and I'll turn this back over to, uh, Tom to discuss civil infrastructure.
Thank you, David. Yes, for the record, once again, um, uh, Tom Daly with SLR. Um, as a civil engineer, sometimes I don't get to work on the, on the fun things that, uh, the landscape architects go, but they're still very important. Um, and some of these things, I remember we had a community meeting early on with this project. I, I forgot how long and. And one neighbor from on, you know, a couple of streets over came up to me and said, you know, asked about drainage. So, well, it's, um. You know, it is an important element, uh, as a part of the plan. So as part of our, uh, this project, we did a very detailed hydraulic analysis. Uh, one thing I would notice, as you can see this plan virtually, except for the small portion of watershed protection area. Which is shown where my, my cursor is. The entire site flows to the wetlands, so we are not draining. Any water to Senkow Ave. Uh, it doesn't really go there today. But we are very conscientious of making sure we pick up all that drainage and send it to the rear. Uh, we have a, a very robust, um, stormwater management system. Located with a large stormwater basin, um, located at the bottom of the hill. Uh, that was a basin that, uh, as, as David might have kind of, uh, showed on landscaping plan. We. You know, many times on projects, we, um, sometimes we just call for a native seed mix. This one, we went a little beyond, and we did a very robust planting plan to the point where I think, um, we got a very good, uh, reception. And, and received approval from, uh, the Groton Wetlands Commission. That was an important part of it. So what I'm trying to show you here is we're picking up all the drainage here. We're taking it back. Before we even get down to the basin, we're running it through a water quality chamber and, uh, into our basin. Um, the basin is designed for the two through the hundred-year storm event. Uh, and actually, we, when we designed this, uh, it's a little more precedence, but we're actually using the new NOAA rainfall amounts. Which are above and beyond the DOT. Uh, they're really catching up with these new climate changes and more heavy rainfall. So we incorporate. They're really catching up with these new climate changes and more heavy rainfall. So we incorporated that. In addition to that. We we so we have a water quality feature and this basin, we're we're showing that there's no net increase in this project for the two through the hundred year storm event. But also this basin also has water quality in it. So we're capturing the first flush and we're holding that and cooling that water. And letting that water infiltrate and be polished by the vegetation that's in the basin. So. We're really developing a plan that provides both water quantity mitigation and quality. And we think that's important because today, actually, the school has zero water quality. It just simply just flows off from the pavement to the back. So anytime we get to redevelopment site, we do have these these opportunities. The site is served by both public water and sewer. We have a sewer connection that's going into Sealy School Drive where it currently exists. And then we have a water connection that's going out to Walker Hill. We've coordinated with Groton Utilities and the the town on both of those connections and. And they've confirmed there's capacity to serve the site. Also, part of the project is obviously construction erosion control is a is a short term impact that we need to consider. We have put together a robust erosion control plan for this. And while I have showed the final phase, you'll see in your package that we actually put together. Upon the town's recommendation, we did put together a multi phased erosion control plan. And I would say this project has already received and registered under the DEP Stormwater General Permit. So. At least in terms of construction, we're ready to go. We were able to submit that registration right after we got our wetlands approval. But we have multiple protections. Obviously, once again, this water is all flowing to the back. And we have a stormwater basin, so that's the main protection, but we do have it along the perimeter. Now, one one item for this commission is, as I indicated, we have a very small portion. Of the site that falls within your water protection district. And that's an area where your zoning code talks, takes a deeper dive into the water quality. And and what and the quantity, they're basically saying, don't take water out of this watershed and and treat it differently. The one thing I would note is if you read your regulation, it really talks about activities. Commercial activities, those activities that potentially could have a risk to the watershed protection. Our building is not located in the water protection district, so really, we're just talking about a small portion of the parking lot. But to comply with your regulations, we almost prepared a micro drainage analysis for this one little area. So we had to. Design a system where this small area goes to its own water quality basin. And then there's also a small portion of the driveway that goes to an underground chamber system. So we have basically put together, it's basically a standalone. So we. Believe it's our professional opinion that we met all the standards of the water protection. Resource protection guidelines by coming up with this design. But once again, I would talk about is we don't have any commercial activities. The building itself doesn't fall within this area. It's just a small little nuance that we just kind of had this small portion of the site, but. It is under your peer review and and we felt it important to bring it to your attention this evening. With that, I'm going to ask Dave Sullivan is our lead traffic planner and traffic engineer, and he's going to walk you through his traffic presentation. So David, I'll start with this slide, but just give me a holler when you want to switch.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Tom. Again, for the record, my name is David Sullivan. I manage the Traffic and Transportation Planning Group. I am a professional engineer in the state as well. We conducted initially our traditional traffic study, traffic impact study, and what's entailed there is evaluating existing conditions. Taking a look into the future and what the future conditions would be. Under a scenario where the development is not built and under a scenario where it is. We call that background and combined traffic conditions. We then do a series of analyses. We look at what the impacts are to what we call levels of service, which are letter grades from A to F. And we identify if there's any mitigation that needs to be done. If we do identify any impact. In this particular case, we conducted a traffic study first in dated December twenty second of last year. The your town then had the the study peer reviewed by Foston O'Neill. And we received those peer review comments in March of this year. And ultimately, we revised the traffic report in addition to do a doing a. Response, a comment by comment response to the peer review comments. So I'll I'll talk briefly about what the results ended up being because quite frankly, they were quite similar. For the original study and the post peer review study. What this graphic shows you is what our study intersections would be, unlike the the. Graphics you've been seeing north is up on this page and the site is shown in the light gray. And you could see along Walker Hill Road. Four numbers, those were our original study intersections. The one number that show number five is in red, that was added as part of your peer review. For each of those locations, one of our initial challenges was to come up with base traffic volumes. The study started during COVID and has continued throughout COVID. So we had a number of data sources that we used. We did some new counts. We had some counts from before COVID twenty nineteen. Counts that were done at one of the intersections, and we also had some state data. That we received from the Bureau of Policy and Planning, which was pre-COVID conditions. So we we took all of that information. Adjusted the volumes to reflect non-COVID conditions. Those traffic volumes. Within balanced, the balanced traffic volumes in a procedure were provided to the Bureau of Policy and Planning of a DOT. And we essentially got approved traffic volumes to start with. The next step was to estimate the amount of traffic that was being. Generated by this this site and we estimate a hundred and nine new trips. During the morning peak hour and a hundred and thirty four new trips during the afternoon peak hour. Those site trips were added to an expanded future level of traffic at the study intersection. So Tom, why don't you go to the next slide, please? We originally had two slides here, but one was going to be the summary of findings for the original traffic study and one was going to be the. Summary of findings for the updated traffic study reflecting the peer review comments. And they were so similar, we said, let's just do one because the findings essentially are are the same. The the first bullet indicates what the what I just indicated, which is the volume of traffic. We use the journey to work data, the census data to determine where the folks are coming and going from. And one of the peer review comments had a slightly different opinion on that ultimately did not change our findings. We did find that all of the study intersections will operate at an overall level service C. C is is good, it's. As a matter of fact, any individual levels of service between A and in in peak conditions on a. On a road such as Route twelve, which has a lot of commercial, even a little service E would be acceptable for a short amount of time. But nonetheless, we had level service C at all of the intersections. We the next.
Excuse me, I have a quick question. What is ISD?
Okay, that that's the next bullet. ISD is intersectional site distance. And that's the site distance when you're pulling out of a driveway or a road. And you're looking in either direction, you're at the intersection and the site distance is how far you can see a car approaching. So the distance you need to see is based on the speed of traffic for twenty five miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit. You need, you need to be able to see a car approaching two hundred and eighty feet away. In this particular case, you could see over four hundred feet away in both directions. So where the driveway is being placed, the site distances are adequate for more than ten miles an hour over the posted speed limit. The next bullet, the peer review asked us to look at the site distances at the emergency access. Typically, we don't do this because it's only used on a very. Unroutine basis and but again, it's it tends to be on the a little bit of a dip. But still, the site lines from the emergency access drive is good for over the posted speed limit of twenty five miles an hour. So those were the specific findings. The overall finding. Is that we anticipate that the proposed development will not substantially change traffic conditions within the area roadway network. And consequently, we have no specific mitigation recommendations, except to maintain the site distances. So. Don't let the. Brush or any of that type of stuff grow to block sidelines along the site frontage. Now, the. One other document that I didn't mention in the first. The first slide is we we did receive a December eighth letter of this year from Foston O'Neill. And among other things, they conclude by saying the. Basically agreeing with our results that we show acceptable level of service at all of the study intersections and no significant. Increases in queues upon the inclusion of the development traffic. All their conditions have been satisfactorily addressed in our revised. Report. And honestly, I'll just indicate that we have started the process with the Office of State Traffic Administration. As a matter of fact, we started it last spring. We did receive the first set of comments, which we have not responded to yet. Because one of those comments has to do with the local approval documentation, things like that. So we thought it was prudent to finish the local approval process and then continue with our. Our state level approvals. So that's all I had. And I think we're moving on to Ray Sullivan, parentheses, no relation.
And just before before I get Ray and and Dave, you brought up a good point. I think we. Forgot to tell the commission. So he, Dave, referred to the emergency access. Our main access is here onto Walker Hill, but we have a gated emergency connection at Sealy School Drive. So once again, it it's a gated access where the fire department will have a key to to get in the gate. But that's where the driveway exists today. We thought it was an opportunity to continue that. But once again, it's a gated access and just our mind thing. But I apologize, we we kind of skipped over that, but when Dave made his presentation, I just want to clarify that. With that, I'm going to stop sharing and let Ray Sullivan start. There you go, Ray.
Hey, where is that? My, I'm just, I'm just looking for my document, which I have open, but I can't grab it. Where is it?
Typically, when you share, there's like four documents that come up, they'll come up underneath your screen. And then you can see it via Zoom.
Yeah, I I see the documents, but but I, you know, I don't see, you know, I I don't see the file I have open.
I can grab it for you, Ray.
Okay, if you can, I apologize.
Let me just say, let me just see.
Ray, I'll I'll pull it up right now for you.
You got anything? Do you want me to do it? You got it? Anthony's quicker than I am.
There you go. Great, thanks, Anthony. For the record, my name is Ray Sullivan of Sullivan Architectural Group. We're located at one fifty five Broad Street in Milford. We've been involved in, you know, we've probably designed, you know, you know, three, four thousand units, you know, we probably have, you know. Well over a thousand on the books right now and, you know, in in, you know, in various, you know, phases and sizes. In terms of general overview, you know, Anthony ran through, you know, much of what my earlier. Or early part of the presentation would be. One thing I'd like to emphasize is that. You know, we've got this, these three buildings that are connected and, you know, we 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 find that it's vital to provide an environment where. There's a lot of interaction amongst the residents and. And so what happens is that, you know, there is a main ground floor where the amenity area is, there is. You know, a all the mail and package storage is there, the leasing office is there, you know, there's a lot of interaction in that area. So there is that indoor amenity, there's that outdoor amenity. And what we found in the past is that when there is interaction amongst the residents, they tend to be. They enjoy living there more, you know, they tend to stay there longer. They feel like they're kind of part of a neighborhood. And it, you know, it's funny, you get these bigger buildings that are connected, they actually provide a better community than than if we had multiple buildings spread out. So, you know, I just wanted to emphasize what. Anthony had mentioned earlier. So he went through all the units, the types, the unit sizes. An ADA. Point is that, you know, a hundred percent of the units are what we call handicapped adaptable. And in Connecticut, ninety percent of those units have to be what we call a type B adaptable unit. And ten percent of them have to be a type A adaptable unit. And the difference is that the type A unit. Has a few more. Handicap elements built into the unit, you know, you know, right up front as opposed to being adapted later on. But but a hundred percent of the units, you know, you know, are are completely adaptable and that's that's going to be required by code anyway. A, you know, a couple other, you know, minor points I just want to run through. As far as laundry is concerned, you know, every single unit, even the studios have their own washer dryers. In terms of private outdoor space, two hundred and ninety seven of the three hundred and four units. Have their own private outdoor space. So I think fifty percent is required, you know, we're about ninety eight percent. And there's just a couple of odd spots where it made sense not to provide a balcony. For for storage. We have partial basement areas under buildings two and three. And, you know, we're providing, you know, you know, approximately two hundred and sixteen, I believe, storage bins. And so that approximately, you know, seventy percent of the units have have access to their own, you know, separate storage area, you know, you know, outside their unit, you know, even though the units are. Well sized and and have good storage inside them. And while this screen is on, let me just bring up a couple of points. You know, on building number two, which is the east, you know, just off that parking area which wraps all the way around the building. There's a lower level entryway with the stairs in a, you know, in an elevator. And then on building number three, you know, which is to the west. There's also a lower level entry, you know, with a stair and an elevator so that. The parking is well dispersed throughout the site and access, you know, from the parking space. To the resident units, you know, is is also well distributed, you know, there are, you know, you know, five main access points, you know, around the site. One other point on while we have this slide open, you know, is that, you know, there is a trash room. On both buildings two and three, you know, what what happens is that. There are trash rooms on the on the upper floors. So, you know, you're rather than have a dumpster, you know, that's, you know, kind of remote. You know, it's it's it's, you know, it's more sanitary to have the residents bring their trash to a trash rooms on the floor. It goes down the chute, you know, once it's down in the chute, there are compactors for both the for trash and recyclable. The when it goes down the chute, you know, the they're the the trash and recyclable, you know, they're compacted, it's a manageable. Enclosed packages, you know, where staff can, you know, easily pick them up. The compactor companies, you know, provide small wheelable container, small dumpsters. That go through a double door and that appropriate times, you know, they get wheeled up for pickup so that. So so all the refuse is actually internal to the building, you know, those. Those rooms are well, you know, you know, ventilated, you know, draft stopped, air protected. And 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 it is is this kind of the typical way the the vast majority of all the multifamilies. You know, operate today, keep that refuse inside, protect it, clean it and and, you know, you know, don't get big. uh, you know, operate today, keep that refuse inside, protect it, clean it, and and uh, you know, you know, don't get big dumpster piles, you know, outside. Uh, Tom, can you go to the next one, please? So this is the the first floor. Uh, you know, you'll notice on the on the previous screen, uh, you know, building uh, two to the east had maybe, you know, two thirds of that footprint had a basement, you know, with some perimeter units where great allowed. Uh, building three to the west uh, had maybe half of that as basement. Uh, and and again, I think there's six units where, you know, we're great allowed. Uh, and the main building, building number one, you know, is the main entrance, it's the main focus point when you first drive onto the site, and it's where the uh, uh, the leasing and all the amenity uh, spaces are. Um, and there's a larger image of that, so we can touch upon that next. If we can go to the next one, Tom? So this is a typical floor, you know, you know, second, third, and fourth. Um, you know, again, you know, we have three separate buildings, but they're connected by these glass sky bridges. So, you know, you could walk from the far end of, you know, building uh, you know, number two, you know, go through building number one and get to the far end of of, you know, building number three, you know, to, you know, to visit a fellow resident, you know, and so it's completely um, uh, you know, interior communication, you know, uh, you know, throughout the facility, there's just some small ground area entrances, you know, at the lower level for the wings. Uh, just quickly to the next one, Tom. This is roof plan, you know, there's really not much to see on the roof plan. Each uh, each building has a stair that goes to the roof. Um, you know, that stair, you know, sits about uh, nine feet above the roof in the middle of the roof. The the roof pitches away from that low point where the stair is, and then there are parapets on the perimeter. So that, you know, that stair might be, you know, might show up as being, you know, four or five feet above the parapet, but it's so deep into the roof, you know, it's, you know, you'd have to be, you know, pretty far away to even, you know, notice that there's actually a, you know, a stair on the roof. Uh, if we could go to the next. Again, so here's that that main entry and amenity. So, you know, Anthony, you know, kind of reviewed everything that's in here already, so, you know, I won't reduplicate everything, but if you walk in immediately on the right is the leasing office behind that is the, you know, the mail package storage area. In the far end of that, you know, is the uh, is is the fitness center. And, you know, this full um, uh, toilet and bathing facilities there, so somebody could go down for for, you know, workout, shower down there and off to work if they wanted to. Uh, but, you know, to to the left, there are a series of gathering spaces, whether or not they're a little quiet, like by the lounge, you know, or 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 seating area and game area in the in that game room, you know, the gathering space or cafe on the far side, you know, has various tables, you know, you might have high top tables and people working on their laptop computers, you know, you know, as they, as they, you know, you know, just, you know, get out of their units. Uh, you know, to the to the far left on the lower is a is a uh, the golf simulator, uh, just beyond the stairs, there's a couple of music rooms, they'll be sound protected. You know, and then there's a business center because, you know, a lot of times, you know, people may have a meeting, or they want to work in a workstation. There are big workstations, smaller workstations, there are conference rooms. Um, and, you know, speaking of conference room, there is one large meeting room in in here in between the lounge and the uh, and the toilet and the bathing facilities, you know, uh, facing towards the courtyard. Uh, and, you know, that's that's really a multi-purpose room that can be, you know, you know, used for any any group gatherings. Uh, Tom, can we go to the next? So uh, these are the building sections through the three buildings, you know, you can see building number one. You know, on the upper left, it's a, you know, it's a slab on grade, you know, uh, building two and three have both the slab on grade, like on the upper right-hand side. And they have uh, some stepped uh, sections where the grade drops off. Um, and so, you know, we call that a four or five split, but the uh, the amount of of that four or five split is is pretty minor in as far as all codes are concerned, building code, it's a, you know, we, you know, we we have a four-story building. Uh, can we go to the next? So I I just want to touch upon the elevations. Um, the the, if, you know, on the on the on the on the, you know, I'm not sure you could see it all that well, but on the on the on the lower portion, there's a string of dimensions. And and, you know, it shows two double windows on the left, you know, in a flat section, you know, that one's flush. You know, and then it hits a balcony area of mechanical closet, you know, and then it hits another flat section that's flush. You know, recess section, flat section, you know, uh, recess section again. So what we, you know, wh- what we have adhered to is that is that we have no um, uh, wall surfaces longer than forty feet, you know, without being broken up, you know, by uh, either recesses, you know, or projections. Um, the 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 solid sections, what what I'm calling flush, will alternate in color. So there'll be two colors, uh, so that vertical piece, you know, you know, will be a darker earth tone color, that middle piece with the three windows, you know, you know, will be a lighter tone color, and then then it repeats again. You know, and then the sections in between, you know, are are a lighter tone beige, and I we've got some color renderings to go through, you know, as well. Um, actually, can you stay back there? I'm sorry. So ju- just a couple of things, uh, you know, again, just to make sure we've got enough variety, we break up the elevations. You know, you'll notice that the parapets of the flush sections are taller than the than the rest of the parapets, the top of the parapets, you know, will vary in in terms of of detail. Um, in in, you know, over the balconies, we actually have a lower roof projected. Um, you know, and on the ends, you know, we've got to have some some horizontal sunscreen projections. Um, you know, you know, we're just trying to, you know, break the scale of this down and create interest on the elevation. You know, there is banding so that the base of the building is all stone veneer. Um, and then we go two stories, and then we create another horizontal band, and then we get up to that parapet again. And again, that parapet, you know, you know, has, you know, you know, varying heights to it. Uh, you'll notice that in between uh, balconies, that, you know, there are uh, what we we've labeled as a condenser location. So you know, there's a question about, well, where is all the mechanical equipment located? So every every unit is self-sufficient, you know, in terms of their MEPs. So we, you know, so we're using um, what we call a, you know, a magic pack. And what that what that is, is that is an air handler that sits over its own condenser. Uh, and it's a box that's probably two-six by two-six, and it might be five feet, six feet tall. And it sits on the uh, on a mechanical closet, you know, you know, off that the outdoor balcony. Um, and the louver goes right through the outside wall. So so instead of having uh, three hundred and four condensers on the roof, or three hundred and four condensers, you know, you know, you know, all throughout the site, each one of these is self-sufficient, the condenser is right flush on its own elevation. So the amount of mechanical equipment, you know, that is going to be on the roof is only that that's going to handle the um, uh, the corridors and uh, you know, and when you get the VRF, the Very Efficient Electric Base Systems, those condensers are the size of a of a suitcase. They're not like the the residential uh, thirty by thirty by three foot tall, uh, you know, condenser we're used to having at our homes. Uh, you know, they're 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 small suitcases, and and, you know, they can be, they can be placed in the middle of the roof or the backside of the parapet. You know, that, you know, they'll be, you know, out of sight, you know, from the uh, from the ground. Uh, now, Tom, could you go to the next? So, i- you know, we'll we'll run through a couple, you know, uh, you know, color drawings here, but uh, uh, again, in color, we're just kind of talking about some of the things we just talked about in that in that black and white. So you see the stone base, you know, you'll see the siding go up, you know, you know, two stories to a band, and then, you know, you know, alternating heights, you know, in terms of the parapets. Um, you know, we've we're using, you know, earth tones, so we've got this 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 lighter um, we have the colors here, you know, we've got, you know, we've got a lighter hazard moss, which is that, you know, kind of light pale green, you know, and then that is accented with a darker color, which is a Monterey taupe, you know, these colors are, you know, from the uh, you know, Hardy panel selection. So um, so, you know, so this is is kind of the typical breakup, you know, you know, where we are providing, you know, a base, a body, and a cap to the building in a very you know, which which are very classical terms, but but, you know, we think we've got it in a well-proportioned, you know, contemporary look. Uh, and, you know, when you look at a longer section of the elevation, which we'll do next, uh, you know, I, you know, I think that the the composition and and following the regs, you know, you know, you know, help create uh, an aesthetic on the outside that's quite pleasing. So, Tom, can we go to the next? Okay, so this this is the front of the building. So um, so, you know, that, you know, that first section, uh, you know, down on the ground floor, that's where the amenity area is, you know, you know, just out of curiosity, you'll see you know, right in the middle, there is this uh, you know, light beige, multi-windowed section, it's three stories. Uh, that's that's three of the of the seven units that don't have balconies, because we didn't want balconies, you know, right over the front door and you know, beach towels and all that stuff hanging out, you know, you know, over this, you know, gorgeous, you know, entry to the, you know, to the main building. But uh, so, you know, again, you know, on on this, I think you can pick up that we are alternating the colors. Uh, there were alternating the parapet heights, you know, we're providing the stone base. Uh, we're providing, you know, you know, the, you know, the banding. Um, and, you know, and and I think it makes for, you know, you know, you know, very attractive composition. Uh, Tom, can we go to the next? So, you know, just in terms of, you know, walking around the building, you know, if we start to look down the west side, um, as if we're heading to the to the to the back, um, you know, you'll see the end of uh, building number one and the beginning of building number three, and you you'll catch the uh, sky bridge that connects those, uh, which is open on the ground floor for for circulation. Uh, but, you know, again, I think the alternating colors and the recess decks, um, you know, they 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 cr- they create almost like a, almost like a street front effect, you know, they, if it doesn't like, look like a big long building. Uh, you know, you know, we're tempting, and and hopefully you'll agree that we successfully, you know, you know, kind of a a achieve this 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 building that looks like multiple buildings with a lot of activity on it, you know, as opposed to a big, long, uh, you know, you know, non-undulating building. Uh, Tom, can we go to the next? So again, uh, you know, a shot from the rear, um, you know, over on the lower right-hand side, you know, is a one of those lower level entries into the building from the slow level parking, you know, just out of view on the left-hand side, that's similar entry to building number uh, three, you know, exists on that lower level. Uh, and everybody down in this level has a grand staircase that goes up to the main main courtyard area. Um, so in the in the far background, you can see the bridge that connects buildings uh, one and two. Um, you can see, if you look down uh, on the right-hand side, uh, the section of building two facing the courtyard, you know, again, we've got the those, you know, those varying degrees of of colors, parapet heights, banding, you know, and materials that I that I think are, you know, making, you know, for a very pleasant, you know, composition. Uh, you know, we've we have, uh, we did purposely orient this, these three buildings, so this courtyard would face south. So, you know, it, you know, uh, oftentimes we get courtyards nowhere near this size. This is an extremely generous courtyard, you know, I think it's over sixty thousand square feet. Um, but I, you know, it's just so important to extend the life of the courtyard to, you know, to get a lot of light and ventilation, you know, into this area. And and you know, so one of the reasons why the billing is arranged the way it is, you know, is so that this 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 courtyard, you know, you know, can face south. Uh, and if we just go to the last slide, Tom? So this is just a slide, if you're if you're if your back is to the amenity area or floor above, so we're looking over the pool. Uh, you know, as Dave pointed out, you know, there's really a lot of outdoor rooms, you know, they're they're, you know, they're segregated areas where there are fire pits, there are grilling stations, you know, there's, you know, playscape, um, there are covered areas, there are open areas. Um, you know, you'll note that there's there's a large, you know, brick patio, um, you know, that you can see. Uh, the, you know, there's there's two umbrellas just beyond the the pool, you know, and, you know, just beyond that, you know, you can see that patio area. Um, you you'll notice the grade in front of that area, that grass firms up. And so, uh, you know, it was, you know, movie night was brought up. And and so, you know, we're we're going to set this up to have series of poles set on the outside wall, and so people could bring their their beach chairs, you know, or their blankets and sit on the slope slope lawn, you know, and and it could actually be movie night, which is, uh, you know, again, it's just one of those community functions that that help bring everybody together, you know, and make it uh, uh, you know, you know, a real sense of community. So, uh, you know, so with that, uh, I'm done with my presentation, happy to answer questions or or wait till later.
At this time, um, I'm going to close it out on behalf of um, all of our uh, experts and presenters and my client this evening, I just for purposes of preserving the record for you this evening, I will note um, the following. Um, Donmar Residential is a family-owned company uh, that prides its reputation uh, equal to the quality of its product that it produces in municipalities across this state. Um, I will note that they have put together a team of experts that and professionals that is second to none. And the quality of the application is revealed in the report, not only from SLR, but from our architect, Ray Sullivan, and all those involved in the design process from beginning to end. I will note that for purposes of site plan review, the proposed application comports with all zoning standards as articulated in your regulations, and I will note that the proof of that is the rigor by which this application has been vetted by the permitting departments uh, in your community. And again, I want to thank your staff for the collaborative uh, approach that they took in working with our client and our design team and getting to this point. I will note for the record that the proposed development received approval from the IWA last year. There was a determination that there will be no alteration of existing wetlands on-site, and therefore no need to create, restore, or enhance. And I should also note that the proposed development falls outside of the CAM boundary lines and also outside of the NDDA. Uh, in sum, as my client indicated at the onset of his presentation, uh, the applicant is seeking to take a dormant parcel and transform it into an active residential community that will generate much-needed housing and tax revenue for the Grotton community. We're going to have a facility on this property that is not only going to generate much-needed revenue for your your community, but in turn is going to generate people that will put that money back into Grotton's economy. Uh, I will conclude by saying that um, in a previous life, I sat in your shoes in another community, eleven years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, eight years as the first selectman of the town of Trumbull, and I can tell you without hesitation, we had many multi-unit projects come to our, before our commission and into our community. I have never seen a residential uh, development like this, multi-unit residential development of such high caliber and quality during my tenure in public service, and it is a testament to Donmar, to their team for the product that they have put before the commission tonight. The applica- the applicant is eager to commence construction and deliver a quality project for the Grotton community. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that will conclude our presentation, and we'd be more than happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, bring it over to staff to for their presentation. I assume that's Diane?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can um, somebody share the site plan, um, from from the Don Martine? Can you share the site plan up on the screen?
I, yeah, I can pull it up. Give me one second.
Probably easier for you to share it. Okay, if we go down. So we want to get to the actual, um, the site plan sheet. I think it's sheet three. Is that right? Yes, there it is. So, uh, the um, the applicant gave a pretty detailed um, explanation for the application, and in your in your um, agenda packet, we have a a pretty detailed staff report, and then a lot of information and a lot of attachments that we've included in the um, in your staff report. I'll just go over a few items and then deal with some of the um, draft conditions we placed on the motion tonight. One of the things we need to look at is to make sure that the existing Sealy School Drive is the existing way to get into the site. That will be actually closed off, and as they discussed, that'll be for emergency access. There will still be pedestrian access that goes into the site, so people will actually still be able to walk into There will still be pedestrian access that goes into the site, so people will actually still be able to walk into the site along the existing. Um sidewalk into the site from the neighborhood. There is going to be a new access. To Walker Hill Road, and then that, that access is through an easement that was um actually recorded with the city of Grotton. To use a, a, a portion of the city of Grotton site. To actually create that accessway. Um. Last year, Donmore actually requested that the zoning official make an interpretation that. What they were proposing met the definition for a driveway for the site. Based on the zoning regulations, um. The zoning official made a determination, and that was actually appealed to the CBA. Um it was appealed taken by, by the neighbor. Um to actually, and they went to the ZBA, what happened at the ZBA was the ZBA determined, determined at that point that there was no. Project that they were looking at, so it was premature to actually make that. So when this project came along, we actually asked for that interpretation again from the zoning official, and that is included in your packet that. He has determined that that driveway meets the. The requirements of the zoning regulations for driveway. And so that's something that you should, you should know about in this case, um. So the access point comes out on Walker Hill Road, there will also be pedestrian access onto Walker Hill Road with a. With a sidewalk. From the zoning, from the planning and zoning perspective. You have the ability to actually um. Create. Or to request off-site improvements for sidewalks, um your maximum ability to do that is two hundred feet. In any direction. If you've gone up to the site, you've noticed that the city of Grotton. Um. Project or um site. With the. Construction of the water tank, they've actually created a ten-foot wide bituminous path along Walker Hill Road. And if you notice going from the new entrance out onto Walker Hill Road down to. Uh Pleasant Valley Road North. There's a weird combination of a. It looks like a concrete sidewalk, and then a bituminous area from the concrete sidewalk that goes out to the. Walker Hill Road. Um line. And in that bituminous area, there's a lot of um. Utility poles. So, we've been looking at that area of. For a while to see how we can actually get the um off-site path there. And actually, you have a letter in your packet that um Donmore has um. Basically stated that he will be working with the town to create a path. Off-site path going from that entrance, the new entrance on Walker Hill Road. Down to um Pleasant Valley Road. Hmm south. But it will not be part of this application. So tonight, um. He will be working with the town and in the future he'll submit an application. Those off-site improvements. Um for it, or a path or, or sidewalk to get down to um Pleasant Valley Road South. Um the other item is for the site is. Let's see. They talked about parking spaces on the site, they're including three hundred and nine parking spaces. They also are including two hu- uh twenty bicycle rack spaces and then two truck loading spaces on the site. They are including some um bicycle rack spaces on the site. They. One of the things you should know is that this application was submitted prior to August fifteenth, when the. New regulations that you, we recently went through. Took effect. So that they did not have to include EV parking spaces on the site, I think they've actually proposed some, and we can discuss. You can ask the um applicant at, at this point, um. So what, we can discuss that, the EV spaces on the site. We've discussed the issue of the Water Resource Protection District, that's only a small area there. Um they do meet all the standards for, for that word, for the WRPD in, in. On the site, so we don't have any issue with that. And they've discussed the traffic on the site, uh. We did have a third-party review that actually agreed that there would not be a significant impact on the traffic on the site, they, they did. Want to discuss, they were looking at those off-site pedestrian improvements, but they realized that that would be under an additional application. In the future. Um. The applicant discussed the erosion and sediment controls, um one of the. One of the draft motions that you'll see when we, when we put up the draft motion is that we're just asking for some additional. Information on the erosion and sediment control plan to make sure that the. The limits of construction on the site are really deline- delineated on the site, either with a sediment fence all around the site. Or some other means of delineation. So that would be one of the conditions we're looking at, or one of the dr- one of the modifications, the actuals. Landscaping on the site, it did go over a. The detailed landscaping plan, one of the issues with, um. They do meet all the landscaping requirements, there is an issue with the entrance drive, again, the new entrance drive. They have been in discussion with Grotton Utilities of, to actually plant the required trees. On Grotton Utilities, um. Site along the entrance drive. And. Grotton Utilities is an agreement that, with that, they just need to work out the formal agreement, and they're going to do that prior to the. Filing of their final plans and land records, so that'll be a condition on the site. They discussed the buffer requirements to the single-family homes on Senko Avenue. Uh again, it's a requirement when it's a conditional use adjac- adjacent to a single-family residential area. The. The um zoning. The zoning regulations allow three different, three different types of buffering requirements. Um whether it's a natural buffer that's a little wider, or whether it's a fence and some landscaping. Or whether it's a. Just plantings along the site, along that buffer area. It looks, they've combined. A few of the buffers, they're actually doing a landscaping and fencing. Um. I know you just approved. The zoning regulations for grading along the property line, and we, we went through a lot of that. Over the summer or so, um they didn't have to meet those grading requirements. Because they actually submitted the application before those grading requi- requirements took effect. They tried the best they could to step back from the property line and try to meet those requirements, um. But the design and the. And the ability to do that on the site. Didn't work um to actually meet those new requirements, they didn't have to meet them. As I said, because they, they submitted the application before they took effect. Um. They did submit a photometric plan, and you had that in your packet. It looks like most of the lighting um is not going to be spilled onto the adjacent properties, I think they did a good job there, it's all full cutoffs. Or fully recessed lighting or, and they will meet the zoning requirements for that. They did go through the storm order um and the drainage report. And we don't have any issues with that, and they did get the, in the Wetland Agency to approve, um. The. The storm order improvements on the site also. The design, the multi-unit residential design, there are new regulations in the zoning regulations that took effect. Um when we approved everything in two thousand nineteen, this is one of the first. Projects where we've been dealing with um large multi-unit development. And seeing if these new regulations work, um what they proposed actually meets the requirements, the new requirements. Um and they, I think they did the best they can to try to break up these large buildings with, um. Different colors, different textures, and different banding. But from, from our standpoint, they do meet the new regulations for the architectural design, the way. They are now written in the zoning regulations. Um they did provide a lot of information on the amenities that are provided, one of the draft motions will basically say, um. They need to meet what they've proposed with these um amenities, and if they do have any changes to them, that. They'll have to be reviewed by either staff or minor or the commission if there's some major changes on the site. The height of the buildings meets the zoning regulations, it's um. It's based on average finished grade, and if you're above forty feet, you have to step back from the required. Setbacks, um one foot for each foot over forty feet. So basically, the average height of the buildings are fifty-two feet high, which means, um. The typical thirty-foot setback from the property line would have to be twelve additional feet, so they step back for. So they are forty-two feet from the property lines. Um so they meet that requirement. And then also, we've discussed the public amenities, the, they are proposing to allow. The public to actually access the dog park, um the playscape that's not within the courtyard. And the trail that goes around the um Aisin area. They will be also working with the town to actually create an easement to allow that. Um access, public access through the um, through the site. And one of the conditions you'll see on the draft motion is that um. We want that easement be finalized and reported prior to any certificate of site plan complying. The, they, there'll also be a mo- a draft, part of the draft motion is to actually, um. Make sure that the playground equipment that is installed is installed by a certified playground installer. And they, that they meet all the safety requirements for installation. And that was a request from the um Parks and Recreation Department um Director. One of the things um that was noted tonight was, um. I know we've had a lot of discussion about rooftop equipment. Uh right now, the roof plans are not showing any rooftop equipment or mechanical besides the, um. I think it's the elevator. Elevator area, um. So if there is any rooftop equipment proposed, um. The draft motion will actually say that they will need to get it reviewed. And by this staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they, and they must meet the zoning regulations, so a specific screening re- requirements. Roof top event, which are new to the zoning regulations, which they will have to meet. And I think that's it. Jeff, did you have any comments on anything?
Nope, covered it, thanks.
Alright. Thank you, Diane. So I'll open it up to the uh commission for any comments or questions they have, I'll start with you, uh Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh. So I, I have some questions here, and I'll try to direct them to the people who I think is appropriate, but if someone else wants to. Chime in, that's fine, the uh, I'm, I'm assuming that the rents that I was seeing, seeing. Uh. Do not include utilities, is that correct?
Um the rents do not include utilities, uh we haven't made a determination about water yet, but as of now, those do not include.
I just wanted to get a feel for what we're, what kind of uh, you know, what we're looking at here, so uh. Storm, this, uh, so this one here might be for uh David Dixon. The uh W, the area that's in the WRPD is, so I'm, I'm to assume that that water that is. In that area is going to continue to go into the WRPD.
That's correct, um for the record, Tom Daley, so that's a depression, that's, uh, all that water in there is going to stay and go infiltrate back into the ground. Correct.
Okay, so and the pervious cover in that area, what percent of that total area is pervious?
Um I will have to.
And I don't need an exact number, I just want to get a feel for what, what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I would say, and that was, that was a revision, so I'm looking at, um. I would say. It's about, um, I would give you about sixty percent.
Is pervious, okay, and that's all gonna go into these uh.
It'll either go to the basin or those underground chambers, correct?
Got you, alright, that's fine.
Interesting enough, this area actually, while your line shows it draining to the WRPD, it actually doesn't drain, it actually drains to. To outside the watershed, but uh we did design in a way that it will infiltrate in the WPRD and not leave it.
Okay. Uh I don't know who would, the electric vehicles, I know that, that there is some indication that there's gonna be some space for charging those. I just want to see how it compares to what it would have been if it had to meet the current. Uh zoning regulations.
So I think right now we have um either somewhere between two and four um electric vehicle stalls on the. Um. On the long elongated vertical side, um it doesn't meet the, the newest regulations, um but what we. We did do is we located them in such a place where. The infrastructure will already be in place, so they're, they're located close to the transformers. Um in the event that we need to add more, um if there becomes more demand for those EV stalls, we are very tight with the parking on this project, we. Um. So we made the decision to keep that number down until we gave a feeling for how many, how many electric vehicles will actually um be parked at the site.
Okay. Uh is there any covered parking?
We do not have covered parking at the moment.
Uh access to the basement area, how do you access the basement?
Um there are stairwells and there are elevators to get down there, um and then the parts that are uh subgrade, there's, there's hallways to get back there. But you give me a second, I can pull up, um, pull up some slides for you.
Then I'm also interested in that basement area, the storage areas, how big are they?
Um I think Ray will have to give you the exact um numbers, let me pull up my narrative. Uh. So each unit in the basement is a five foot by five foot and a nine foot ceiling area, so those are twenty-five. Well, twenty, two hundred twenty-five cubic feet storage in each one of those lockers.
And does everyone get one?
Um no, so the, the amount of units that will get one are two hundred sixteen, so that's about seventy-one percent. Um the requirement was fifty percent have access to a hundred cubic feet. Um but we only had room to uh to put two hundred sixteen down there, but what I will say is that within each of the units, there are. Um closets that can be almost considered dead storage. But what I will say is that within each of the units, there are closets that can be almost considered dead storage to, to accommodate a similar amount of things in there.
Okay. And, and are those additional rental fee for those spaces? Or are those included in your rent?
We haven't decided whether it's going to be a first come, first served, or it's going to be something that drives a little bit of revenue. Right now, they're not accounted for in our projections. But again, with, with escalations and everything that's going on right now, we don't want to leave that, leave that out of the question.
Okay. I, I mean, some of these things, that, that doesn't necessarily apply to the zoning regulations. So my, so this is, I'm gonna try to, like, this goes back a long time, and I don't even remember what it was, but there's a few people on the commission. And I think Diane and Deb were around when Floyd Kravitz tried to do the development on Bonnie Circle and Pamela Drive. And this commission had a quite a bit of concern about noise from the highway and how it would be mitigated. And at that time, there was a proposal to build a giant wall between that development, are people remembering this? And the, and the highway. And I'm just wondering what is happening here? Because I, what I would kind of like to see is a picture that shows the, a bigger area and maybe even an like a topographical elevation that would show how it is, how this development is related to the highway, which is pretty close by. And how, and if any things have been done in the construction, maybe Ray Sullivan could weigh in to attenuation of noise from the highway in these units. And I don't know what, you know, if it's construction techniques or building materials or what, but was any, was that taken into consideration?
Yeah. So it, it's, it's a combination of all those. So, you know, one, 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 you know, one factor that happens that we get multiple benefits from is that, you know, the energy code has become much more strict. And, you know, you're typically doing door test on units. I mean, you really have to seal that unit, you know, because you're putting this fan on the door and you're sucking all the air out. And if it sucks too much out, it just means there's too much infiltration. So that the exterior of the building is very tightly sealed. And so, so what happens is that does the same thing for energy as it does for sound. Because that, you know, the sound's going to get in any, any crack and crevice. And then the, the, you know, the, the deeper insulation values, you know, you know, there's no more two by fours or all two by six. There's higher R values that buffers the sound. The windows. So, so, so what happens is that when, you know, on the, on the, on the, on the critical sides facing anything with noise, when you get the double pane window, if the double pane has different sized glass, you know, so, you know, it might be an eighth of an inch versus three sixteenths of an inch, you know, in that assembly, when there's two pieces of glass of different thicknesses, that the, the sound is, it's much more difficult to, to, to travel through. And so the exterior, you know, you know, the exterior windows have a much greater, you know, S T C value or sound transmission coefficient. And so the, the, you know, we plan on, on, on identifying those windows at the end, which would be more exposed to noise, to have a higher quality window, a higher S T C rating, you know, you know, on those. But that and the, in the double effect of the energy code really helps seal these units. We've got other units that are built on near train stations, you know, near, near ninety-five and other towns. And, and those techniques have been very effective.
These are not impact resistant windows. We're north of ninety-five, I believe.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, it's not. But it's, it's, it's just that the, the, you know, when, when the, the double panes are of different thicknesses, it's really of a, a great sound benefit.
Okay. So are those windows which are, so I'm assuming, so let me just make sure I'm understanding this. Some of the windows in these buildings are different than other windows?
Yes. I mean, they'd be the same window type, you know, there'd be a different, you know, you know, glass spec on them.
And are those windows identified in the plans?
Not, not at this point. We, we would typically do that in construction documents, you know, you know, kind of once we, you know, get into more detailed documents.
We, okay. So I guess I'm not gonna see that. That's all the questions I have at this point. I mean, I'll, I'll just put it out. It was a long time ago, but that Bonnie Circle Pamela Drive development didn't happen. So I just, you know, and it was because of the noise. So I'm hoping that whatever it is that you're doing works. That's all. Thank you.
Well, if, if, if I could, just, just if I, if you want, if I could build on that. What, what, so, so it's not only noise from the inside, it's noise, I mean, not, it's not only noise from the outside, it's noise from the inside. You know, you know, we, we found that's a much bigger issue than the outside news. And so, so, so what happens is when we build these units, the common wall between units are double walls. There's, there's, there's two walls built there, and then they're separated by an air gap. And they're both insulated. So, so we don't have common walls where somebody's bedroom in one unit is next to somebody else's bedroom, you know, in another unit. They're separated and, and highly insulated. You know, we keep away from putting outlets in the same stud spaces because that's how the noise gets through. It's all these little openings. The floor ceiling assemblies are made so that the, the, the floor framing goes down. And then a sound mat goes down. And then Jip Creed is poured on that, which is liquid gypsum. And, you know, when you walk through that wood frame building after the liquid gypsum is poured, it almost feels like a concrete structure. But, but, but what that does is it isolates both impact and, and air bond noise, you know, from kind of vibrating the material. Because materials that are connected, you know, will transfer the sound. So on the bottom side of that, on that floor ceiling assembly, we don't sheet rock to the underside of the truss. We sheet rock to a resilient clip. So the, the, we, we screw a sheet rock, we, we screw the resilient clip to the underside of the truss. And then, then that, that comes and bends away. And then we screw the sheet rock to that so that the sheet rock never touches the truss. So whether it's a sheet rock on the bottom, the insulation in the floor ceiling assembly, or the isolation of the floor surfaces up on top. You know, we go to great extent just to make sure that the noise within the, in the building is controlled. Because we, you know, you know, as far as noise is concerned, we find that of, of far, far greater impact. But, but, but we, we do pay attention to the outside, but, but, you know, we, we, we pay strict attention to the inside.
All right. I'm, I'm, I feel satisfied, but I, I would like, if anyone else has any concerns about that, certainly. That's all my questions at this point. Thank you.
Al? Yeah, I have got a couple of things before we drop completely the acoustics part, which some of it is not under our purview. So we just get some of those things that has nothing much to do with site planning and just getting off my chest here. So I, I feel fairly confident that you'll be able to make the insides of these places quiet, especially you picked up on the different sizes of glass, have a lot of familiarity with that, even up to needing laminated glass on one of the panes. And it, it does easily make them silent on the inside from outside noise. Though frankly, just the layout of your buildings is sort of a noise catcher from the highway. I don't know what you can do about. Was that your, what you spent this tremendous amount of attention on this gorgeous courtyard. Seems to me, if you haven't done any modeling on it, it seems like you should because it seems like it should be deafening in there with highway noise, which would be all day long. There's no point at which it really loosens up. So you're, you're right there. They got a perfect sight line from the courtyard, I believe, to the highway. And it's just gonna funnel in there, funnel in there and rattle around inside your, your perfect sound catchers. So that's not, not our purview. So I think, think you should really look at that because I don't sure what you can do with that, what goes on inside. Easy enough to make them quiet and lateral, have the separations and whatnot. That's normal stuff to do. With regard, one, we pick up on, on the site plan, it doesn't really show very much on your drawing. So I'm looking at the Google map though, is where the, your entrance comes out under Walker Hill Road. And then you quickly, you'll stop at a stop sign at the end there and make a sharp right. And you'll be right at Bushnell Road, Bushnell Street. Thirty feet away. Is there any thought given to what happens there now? Right now, there's no traffic on Walker Hill Road. So you just breeze by that and don't even notice Bushnell. I don't think it has a lot of traffic, but it seems to me that's a place to have very few cars be really in the way of each other because people coming out of Bushnell are going to be surprised by someone making the turn. So has any thought been given to that?
Dave Sullivan, have you?
Yeah, I'm just clicking my, my buttons back on. We did, there is a slight offset there, the offset. And we did analyze each of the intersections individually. And both will, will operate very, very good. And the offset is such that there is visibility between the two intersections. So there is, it's, it's not a situation where somebody's coming out of a a blind area. Granted, there's nobody there now. But the, the people coming out of Bush, Bushnell will be doing the same thing that they are today, which is pull up to the stop sign, look for approaching vehicles. And as long as the approaching vehicles are in your view shed, within the speeds that they're traveling, you'll be fine.
So, yeah, it's that you're gonna look up and down Walker Hill Road is what, where you'd come out of Bushnell. I don't know if I would think of, unless you've already been hit once, I don't think you think of looking in the adjacent driveway to figure out what that person's doing.
Oh, you, you, you certainly will. You, you know, if, if at this point, you're not accustomed to it, but once the driveway is there, you certainly will. You know, granted, the, the school driveway is a little bit further west. But they were accustomed to looking at vehicles coming out of the school driveway as well.
Well, school driveway was a hundred feet away. School driveway was just part of the traffic on Walker Hill. Here, we're talking about cars thinking they're clear, coming out of your driveway, turn right, and then there's the surprise of Bushnell. That's, that's different from Sealy School where that was what you saw going up, down the street. So not sure what can be done there, but it might be one of the things as, as you go forward, thinking what to do with that asphalt strip. Unless it appears, it's possible there's still a little traffic there now that's quote unquote Navy housing. And it's, I suppose there's a fair amount coming out there. Yes, there would be a fair amount of traffic coming out of there. And they're a hundred percent going to be wanting to come out Bushnell and turn left. And they'll look up Walker Street and not see anybody. Unfortunately, the guys turning right will be right on top of them. So it seems like there should be some, I don't know what to do there. If it's not at a extra stop sign to Walker Hill Road, which wouldn't hurt anybody because nobody's moving very fast. But it seems like some consideration needs to be taken of that intersection. It's a, not an issue intersection now, your driver will make it a, a situation.
Again, it's, it's the key when you have slightly offset intersections, and in this particular case, it's slightly offset. If they're in the same decision-making, you should. When you pull up to make your exit, right now, you have no choice but to look only east and west. This will become part of your, your view shed. Of looking at the vehicles there. Offset intersections are not uncommon. You'd like to avoid them when you can. The, the biggest concern that we have with offsets would be when left turns lock up because of the orientation of the offset and the distance between the offset. In this particular case, the volumes and the amount of offset do not warrant a concern there. Again, not, not quite sure how to layer concerns.
I'm just wondering, is this, it's one of those things where I don't think we would know there's a problem until we have a, the second fender bender or, or the people in that end unit have a little screeching tires and wonder what's going on. And if there never is, then you're right. It's really not a problem. And just wonder if there's the potential for a Plan B, should that be an issue? I don't, I don't know what that is.
The Plan B would make it always stop and then you just have an space in between the two intersections, which would be part of your, your clearance. So the stop signs would be the outside of the two intersections on Walker Hill Road. So when you pull up, you have to stop. That, that would be the mitigation, assuming there was some concern there.
All right.
For the record, Tom Daley, and I think we probably wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a problem with the condition that, you know, once we get closer to C O, that we meet with your town engineer out there. And probably your legal traffic authority, which may be your police chief. And, you know, not, not that we're ready to open up, but maybe we're getting close to open up. We can do a site visit out there and we would have no objection for Dave, myself, and to get with some town staff and take a look at it. And if there's any, whether we have to do a little clearing, get the sightlines or some additional signage, we could, we can work with the, the town on that.
I'm thinking that when you, when you, while you're building it, you're not going to see any issue. It'll, it'll show us, well, lots of construction trucks coming in and out.
Yeah, the good thing, I just looked at it. Yeah, I just did look at the Navy housing. Luckily, that's not the only way in and out. They have multiple points of connection. And then maybe that's why their traffic is so low coming out of there because they have, they kind of, their traffic fans out over there. But you're, I think your comments are well taken. And even if it's a temporary signage, while Dave says as it gets into people's psyche or their normal thing, maybe there's some temporary signage we put out there to say, hey, by the way, there's an intersection over there. Get that into your thing. But we're not, we're more, we want to be safe coming out on our intersection also. So I think the best thing to do is, is we, we may with your town engineer or your legal traffic authority, as we get, you know, maybe when we get the driveway roughed out and we all can stand out in the road and see, see if there's any signage that it could be intersection ahead or, you know, a warning sign on the stop sign. But we'd be more than happy to work with the, your town staff on that.
Let's see. An issue that came up between the time any of us ever first looked at it, but now we're always looking at it. For your storage units that you're talking about, by the time people start moving into here, a significant portion of them will have an electric bike. Is there any provision for it? For, you can't walk them up the stairs. So is there any place to put an electric bike, the fifty-pound electric bike? I'm hoping all of us will have some of these and it just can become so, so normal to have. And certainly in this area, they'll take you wherever you need to go. So it'd be a great thing to have rather than driving. At least once out of here.
I, I would say that aside from the outdoor parking stalls, obviously somebody's not going to leave an out, electric bike outside overnight. Or a typical bike for that matter, but there's two hundred sixteen storage places in the basement. And you can easily store an electric bike on a vertical bike rack with a tire hook in one of those rooms. Again, there's seventy-one percent of the units have access to those storage spaces. And if you're one of the unfortunate that do not get access to those storage space, there's more than enough room to say, store one of these bikes in your own personal apartment. And you can always wheel it on into the elevator to get it up there if it's a little too difficult for you.
You, you're saying a, a vertical rack? You mean, you're actually gonna turn the thing upright to hook it on?
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't count on that. These things are, half of them are too heavy, but I guess that'll be an issue you're gonna have to deal with. I just was interested because we, none of us knew this was coming. And here we are with it. What kind of the details, you seem to be pretty good. One thing I didn't see about your, the, the retaining wall and screening issue. And I'm honestly not, not crazy about. I know how you got here. And I think we're way too far along to do anything major different. It seems like the building B was established exactly in plan where it went long ago. And now you've just been doing whatever it takes to make it work there rather than shift it or break it or anything like that. From, from my opinion, you've heard different from staff and we'll have to, I think we'll have to live with it. But taking a three hundred foot monolith and having striping and a couple of different colors on it, doesn't break. a couple of different colors on it, uh, doesn't break up a monolith. It's still an awfully big building, no matter how you look at it. And it's, it's not really broken up when we talk about it. So then you're left with, how do I screen the heck out of it? One thing I didn't see in your screening plan, which is you showed the retaining wall and you showed the house. And then you showed another retaining wall and Arbor Vitae. I don't even think, no, if you were showing the trees, which I think are Linden, which are great, they're great big adult, they'll become enormous trees. Uh, at least six months out of the year, otherwise that we invisible. Um, but I didn't see the building, so I really don't have a feel for how these things are actually screened. Do you have a section through the site? That actually takes you from the neighbor's house to the building?
No, we don't have a section that, that goes that far.
Did the, did you map that out? So you've got a fence there and it's up pretty close. So did you map that out, that, that sight line? Does it screen the, the buildings from a man standing? It's also a one-story building there, right? Yes, it's a one-story building. Uh, the houses rather. So did you map that out to see if it actually screened someone from their back's window looking? Where now they see nothing?
We did not. Um, I do notice that, you know, those neighbors also have vegetation in the back of their properties that we didn't map out because we didn't have access to their property. But no, I, we didn't have an, an ability to, you know, put a body in the backyard and, and do a sight line to the building. No, we do not have.
Tom, uh, Tom, this is Dave Dixon again, uh, landscape architect with SOR. Um, I think what's important to note here is that the, uh, the Arbor Vitae that are proposed here are the green giant. These things will mature to sixty feet high and all the way to, to width of anywhere from fifteen to twenty feet. So it will become a solid screen. These, uh, are variety grow approximately three feet a year. So they're extremely fast growing. They'll be planted at ten foot high. And in a matter of, uh, ten years, they will have gone another thirty feet in height. So I think that there's a fairly significant screen that will do a, a decent job. Um, and over time of screening out majority of that building.
Hmm, you know, with, with the how long do these things live? I don't know. I, I think I know the green giant and I think I've actually got a few of them between me and my neighbor. Uh, and they are enormous, can get, they're getting enormous and they stay, stay pretty well filled out. But I don't know what it'll be like in twenty-five years or are these things going to get thin on the bottom or?
No, they don't. No, that's one of the, that's one of the benefits of this particular species, unlike a, a white pine that will get leggy, uh, on the bottom and those, uh, lower branches start to come up over time. Which is just, uh, you know, so annoying. Um, these things are, are rather pest and drought resistant. There's not much that can go wrong with them. I'll tell you the one thing that would happen if we were in a situation where the deer uh, would graze on them. Uh, that might cause some problems in the lower, the lower, uh, three to four feet or five feet height.
Uh, the retaining wall, what's, what's the nature of that retaining wall? I just say that because it looks like just a few feet back from this, the lot lines of, uh, the neighbors and there's a lot of it, like the six foot of, we have a six foot retaining wall. Well, then you've got the Arbor Vitae before the four foot, so that'll be screened, but you got a six foot retaining wall pretty close to the lot line. What's the nature of that retaining wall? I just don't think.
They will be a modular block retaining wall, so there, there's a detail shown on.
It's a rusticated face, it's a.
Yes, okay, yes, it'll, it'll be, uh, you know, more of a, you know, the standard wall you've seen around, it's a modular block with a, with a, uh, a rough face, don't more stone looking. Um, you know, there's so many products on, on the market, we haven't picked the product itself, but, um, it will, it will not be, you know, an industrial type looking retaining wall.
Right, there's no, is there, well, actually, do the neighbors already have fences? Is there, is anything on the lot line? You seem to have a very small area.
I, I walked it. I, I think there was an old broken down chain link fence that is a remnant of the school, but it's, it's kind of really scrubby and you know, beat up. At least I walked on the, I, on the school side, looked like more of a dumping area, um, into the, into that area. But they, I don't, the, the neighbor is down on their property, might have had a screen fence, but I don't recall seeing one.
Alright. That'll be the opportunity. If not already, it seems like there's a lot of shrubs growing there, but.
On their property, yeah.
They'll be able to screen it.
Correct, and, uh, so you'll see, um, there's a retaining wall detail shown on our sheet SD five. If you, if you want to see.
That's, yeah, that, that's what I saw then.
Yep, yep.
I just didn't know.
And then, and the way the wall, because we're higher, we're going to place those walls, fill in behind ourselves, place another block, fill in behind. So we don't have to go, uh, on, on the property line because we're, we're building it from our side into the site as opposed to going the other direction.
Got you. Had something else. Oh, and for the, there's another detail I shouldn't care about, but I had to ask for the, you mentioned that you, each unit's going to have its own. Um, heat pump, I guess, right?
Yes, it's a stack of, of P-Tech unit.
Okay.
I mean, a, a, uh, uh, magic pack.
Magic pack, okay, brand name, but uh, and that's on an outside wall or is that on the balcony?
So it, there's a mechanical closet on the balcony, so it's on the outside wall of the balcony.
On the outside wall of the balcony, so there's venting that it faces into the balcony or is the venting face outside?
The venting face is outside.
Okay, not into the balcony, okay.
Not, not into balcony, no, sir.
Alright, good, good, good idea, since I, I, I was someplace where that was the case and it made the balconies unusable. And by the way, with, with regard to, as far as I'm concerned, with regard to the, uh, providing electric spaces for charging your cars. However, many you have, I think your market's going to define how many you need to put in because half your clients are going to end up with electric cars. So if you want to keep them, you're going to be adding them as everyone will. Especially under every apartment is just going to have to do it if they want to keep their people. So I'm unconcerned with that. Um, otherwise, I guess, okay, took a look and I suppose you're you're about point four, maybe half a mile to make it back to Coles. Walking all the way around. I don't think there's anything we can do about that for the time being, since you seem to be isolated from twelve.
And, um, I'd like to point out that on our site plan and I can pull up the sheet, we do have, um, we did indicate where a future access to the attached land can, can be feasibly located. Um, so it is shown on our plan.
Oh, is it? Okay, I didn't see that, but good. Really, where is it?
So let me, uh, let me share my screen here.
Okay.
So if you could kind of see where my cursor is, I'm going to zoom in here. Uh, we located it right here, possible future driveway connection. Um, that was dictated, so we're kind of where the grade steps down, we had pulled that retaining wall on back over here and, uh, made sure that there can actually be a future connection made through this area. And that's, um, that's actually a real, um, real place where a connection could be made, um, because of the grades that are on the adjacent property. So there is potential to connect this property to a future development there. And again, that would mitigate any access onto Walker Hill Road, um, should the, uh, adjacent parcels become developed at a, uh, at a future point.
Not frankly, I was thinking more about pedestrian. Honestly, I think from, from what you're telling us and from my, what I've seen about Walker Hill, it can handle this many apartments, but like it, it, it seems everything, the shopping centers should be walkable and right now it's kind of on a hairy edge, you know, point four miles gets to be and farther than you want to carry anything, so. Alright, I think I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm good. That's all I have. Barbara?
I had a concern about the traffic. I, you've done these two traffic studies and it's it just seems to be an awful lot of additional traffic to me when you've got about a hundred and eighty-four cars in the afternoon coming and going, uh. It just seems like an awful lot of traffic area. And I imagine what you can do about it is, is that a normal acceptable level of traffic? Um, well, you're gonna say yes, but.
Well, well, there is no normal acceptable. The way we measure it is, is it changing the conditions out there in terms of, of what you perceive when you're driving. Um, so when you pull up and you get to the, um, stoplight of Route twelve, are you going to feel any different if you're not coming to this development than you do if the development was never built? So that, that's how we judge it. Um, in terms of the, the numbers, um, I, I, a couple of things. One, um, let's take the hundred and thirty-four, for example. That's both cars coming in and out and also cars going left or right. So, you know, when you're taking any particular approach, and I'll use that same intersection of Route twelve. Um, by the time you get there on Walker Hill Road, you've funneled some off um, by going left and going west out of the site, you've funneled some off going south on, um, Pleasant View South and some that are going north there. So by the time you get to that intersection, you might have thirty percent of some portions. So in the afternoon, let me look at my cheat sheet here, you have fifty cars exiting. And thirty percent of those fifty cars are maybe fifteen cars or one every, let's say, four minutes. That's what you're seeing on the eastbound approach at the Route twelve Walker Hill intersection. So it disperses quite, quite a bit. And sometimes the number is a little more alarming, but we do have a way to measure the impact. And the way we measure that is based on, um, your perception of a driver's perception of how things operate. So our levels of service, for instance, are based on delays. So level of service A means when you pull up to an intersection, your average wait time might be five seconds. When you get to B, it goes up and it might be fifteen seconds. Uh, level of service C is kind of average when you pull up to a, a traffic light. If you're waiting thirty seconds, it's, it's not the end of the world. Um, so if it's C today and then we build this and it's still C, how you feel when you approach that light is not going to change. And that's, that's how we judge the impact.
Okay.
Can I interject, uh, Barbara? That, just, just wondered if, I, I didn't see in your charting about time of day, which is why I wasn't really concerned with this, is that overwhelmingly for that area when it's around three o'clock and four thirty is when there's a ton of traffic going southbound on Route twelve because it's coming out of Subbase. And in the morning at some crazy hour, it's going north at Subbase. And everything else is sort of secondary to that. And I think this, the traffic coming from this would wouldn't add to any of that. It's, it's countering it. It's, it's, it gets to, it might want to turn left from Walker Hill uh, onto Route twelve, and just as likely as they'll just go Pleasant Valley. So I, I think it's it's kind of going the opposite way for half of the, for half of the load. So just at any given moment, I didn't see it really adding a whole lot of traffic. It's not like it's, oh, northeast corner above Mystic someplace.
And, and I would say that I, I, I think the commissioner's comments about traffic are wa- warranted. It's, it's an important project and I assume that's why the, um, town took it upon themselves to get a peer review to make sure that, that our analysis would.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Barbara?
No, nothing, Jeff.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I guess, um, not a lot more than what's already been asked, but, um, I like the fact that it has some access available to the public. That's really good. I mean, seeing so many of these gated type large complexes. And it looks like, um, especially if you had your electric bike, it'd be very feasible to be going across Route twelve to shop if you wanted to get your groceries and stuff. I don't think that's out of the question. That may be an opportunity to improve that whole, uh, tie in there eventually. Because there certainly is more land around there that could be developed, so, um, this may not be the last one we see of this, but no, I think overall, um, given the site, which I have walked and everything, I think it's, uh, makes sense and the design also, so, uh, those are all my comments.
Kevin? I'm sure, so, um, like Barbara, I was concerned about the traffic. Um, but, you know, there's a, there's a peer review that was done. And it would have been nice, um, if this was a school, was there any less traffic when this was a school? Um, so it seems like it'd be kind of equivalent. I don't see it in the end, although I had some issues with it, thinking about it. I, I just don't see a traffic issue here. So, um, I thought you did a good review on, um, a review on the algorithm which you just covered, which was good. I also like that the access to the public, the sidewalk. So it's not there yet and we can't penalize anyone for being a half mile from where the shopping center is. But at least there's a plan potentially, I thought, um, to get there more than anything else. Um, the third thing was kind of where Michael was going, um, on noise. And, um, Hal brought it up as well. So I'm very sensitive to noise and have a lot of different houses and places where, um, noise has been a problem, but that's the developer's issue, right? They're taking that risk and it appears that if there, um, there's un, undue concern, they're going to solve that problem. So again, I think, um, I actually like the design a lot. I like, um, having been in the city too much, I like the balcony effect and that whole street of, where it just doesn't run straight. May catch some noise as Hal indicates, but it's a good look, uh, I think for Groton. It's a good, high-quality look and I like where the price is sitting with it. I know it's not part of, again, of our review, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a overall very, very good project with those little concerns, but we've had them answered, so, um, I think it looks good and that's my comments, Jeff. No questions, really.
You know, I didn't have any new issues that haven't either been resolved by common or were put into, uh, the proposed, uh, um, motion for action.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one more, uh, thing I'd like to discuss if I could, please.
Go ahead.
So, uh, in our regulation, seven point four dash three point one does deal with noise. And I just want to, uh, you know, it, it says in here maximum noise level fifty DBs at night and seventy DBs during the day. Now, uh, it references in that, in our regulation, uh, environmental protection uh, reg- regulations on section twenty-two A dash sixty-nine one. But I just, I, uh, I, was anything done to determine and, and it does, and, and I don't have that. I'm sitting here trying to dig it up, but I couldn't find what that Connecticut state regulation, how it actually reads. It looks like it's quite long. But I guess, uh, my question is, uh, how do we know that these, uh, noise levels are being achieved, given that it is in our regulations? And are, are these, and I, this is for staff because it doesn't specify in here, maybe someone knows. But are those outside noise or is that inside noise? I'll note, I just looked up what fifty DBs is and that's the, that's, uh, described as something that is a quiet conversation, a quiet office or a quiet refrigerator at fifty DBs, so. Just want to know if that's inside noise, outside noise, and was that taken into consideration with the construction?
So, so to the chair, it's Tom Daley with SR. My, my reading your regulations is that is noise generated by the project because that would have a negative impact on the neighborhood. This, we have no noise generating, um, features of this project. It actually is very quiet. I think the comments from the, the commission members as it's really about us receiving the noise of ninety-five, but in terms of your noise ordinance, um, I assume there's, uh, the one thing on your order ordinance, we'd probably have to, our, our construction noise will have to probably, we'll have construction hours. our, our construction noise will have to probably, will have construction hours probably to comply with those. Is that what I typically see? But we do not have any, uh, elements of this plan that, um, are generating noises greater than that, that levels that would have a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll take you at your word, but I just, I don't know why, uh, we would have a regulation that would, uh, the, I mean, ob- obviously if the building were near something more sensitive, you wouldn't want it to generate noise. But if the building were out in the middle of the woods, then it wouldn't even matter. And so why would we have a regulation that tells us what the maximum noise level can be? It, it's, it seems like it's site specific um, to it. And, and I don't know, I, I, and once again, I'm not, I'm just reading my regulation here. And I haven't read the environmental protection. Is the staff got any, uh, input? Anyone there? Hi.
Well, it's for uses, isn't it?
Pardon me?
It's for uses.
The, um, the, the, Mr. Daly was correct. It's the noise generated by the project to an off-site, um, surrounding area. It's not basically the, the highway generating noise to the project. Um, we don't have any requirements in, in Groton, and I don't think they do in the state as far as, um, highway noise is generated to, to an actual project, um.
Diane didn't, I mean, I, maybe I'm just out of, out of whack, right? Been on this commission too long. But I know that Mr. Kravitz, who was trying to do the, uh, Bonnie Circle Development, which is just a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile from this site. His application was denied because of the noise that was being generated from the highway, and he couldn't mitigate it, or he wasn't willing to. Is that, was that our old regulations?
He was under the subdivision regulations, and in the subdivision regulations, there's a, there is a regulation that says you can actually ask for a, what we call a non-developable, non-developable area for something that is generating an impact on the subdivision of a single-family home such as noise from the highway.
Okay, all right.
And so, yeah.
No, thank you. That's clear. I, I don't mean to be, uh, make problems, but I just, you know, I read my regs and then if it.
No, no, I understand that. And if we were in another state, it might be different, but in this state and, and, and in our town, we don't have that regulation that protects the, the, um, resident from highway.
Yeah, no, it's something that, I mean, I know from my own experience, it's, it, uh, noise is exhausting.
I know, I know that.
When you're up against it. And so that's why I was, I wanted to listen to, uh, Mr., I, uh, I don't mean to be the architect, Mr. Sullivan, to tell me what they were doing, and, and the construction techniques sounded pretty good to me. I wish that there was, you know, uh, that I could see what the glass was on these windows. I would feel better about that, but, uh,
I think they can, I think they can protect the inside noise. It's the outside noise that could potentially be an issue.
Yeah, I think it's going to be quite loud there personally.
It is. But Diane clarified though, right? I mean, she's pretty precise. Yeah, as far as how it's read. I'm concerned about it as well, but as I said, there's no regulation on that, right?
Yeah, no, okay, I'm okay. I'll, I'll be quiet. Thanks.
No, no, it's good, Mike.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
But those, uh, houses that are, are right next to ninety-five on the, that we just approved, the, uh, reduction on bond. Yes. They're, they're very close tonight.
No doubt, right? No doubt.
That's really loud.
That's gonna be louder than this place.
Well, your, your next project is to update the subdivision regulations, so you can deal with that, um.
The difficult, uh, thing to tackle, because it's hard to, uh, to know just what it is that you're, you know, trying to control and how you control it.
Right, and this, this state doesn't allow you to do like environmental impact, um, reports or whatever unless it's a state project. But, um, under those environmental impact reports, sometimes you can deal with the noise issues. But not, not right now, not in Groton at this point.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, my memory is like, sometimes I like amaze myself.
I forgot about that, uh, the moment, the one you were talking about.
Yeah, no, well.
Because that, we went on and on for that.
Yeah.
But they do have those fences they put up all.
Yeah, but it wasn't tenable. It wasn't a good situation there. Anyway, that's it.
No, but you could have, if it got to be really bothersome outside, I guess you could have them put up fences and stuff. I don't know how effective they are, but you see them along ninety-one.
They look horrible.
Does anyone have any other issues to discuss? Does anyone have any problems with the, uh, proposed motion for action? Is, has the applicant seen this, uh, proposed motion, Diane?
Yes.
I have.
Does he have any, are there any concerns with it?
No, I'm, uh, good to go with the, uh.
All right.
Motion.
Okay.
Uh, one more thing, please. The sidewalks, the, uh, I know that, uh, it was mentioned that the two hundred feet are weak. Everyone's comfortable with that. That we are allowed to, you know, have sidewalks installed within two hundred feet.
At this point, um, at this point, we are not requiring that, um, but the, uh, I don't know if, um, Anthony, do you want to speak on that and what you wrote in your letter?
Yeah, so currently there's, um, there are sidewalks going down Walker Hill Road. Um, part of my presentation to the town council, um, I had told them that I was going to continue that multi-use path that's, um, in front of the water towers down Pleasant Valley. It's a little bit more complicated of a task than we had foreseen previously. Um, so our plan right now is, once we have engineers back on staff, we're going to survey that road going down and actually design a new sidewalk system to replace the one that's, um, there right now. And we had taught this over. And the way that the town's going to have their assurances is we have a, um, tax agreement in place right now. And so that's going to be, that's basically in place to make sure that I follow through on that. Um, but because it's, it's not part of the actual zoning regulations, the leakage regulation, um, we felt it was best to leave it off of the application, um, just as to not kind of confuse things.
And that's along Pleasant Valley Road?
It would go from, from our entrance all the way down Walker Hill Road.
Walker Hill Road to, uh, Route 12, okay.
That's good.
All right, so long as everybody's comfortable with, with sidewalk situation.
Wasn't that all? Wasn't that all trailers? Were, weren't there, was there a trailer park along that road?
Yeah, belonging to you know who.
Yeah, right. That's why there's, you can just see the remnants of it. I'm looking at a shot right now. So that's probably why it got paved. So it could jump over the, the sidewalk. And that was the solution. Well, so it was never meant to be driven on, but I guess we can.
You just didn't want them back, Hal. She didn't want those trailers coming back. She put them out.
Okay. All right. So anyone have any other?
No more interruptions.
All right, then I'll make a motion. So we can proceed here. I'll move to approve a site plan, S I T twenty-one dash fifteen for Triton Square Apartments at fifty-five Seeley School drive with the following modifications. One, the final E N S plan shall be modified to include the following. A, the limits of construction line shall be marked in the field along the entire construction boundary with a sediment fence or some other means of demarcation dependent on the construction slash grading design in the area. The final demarcation shall be approved by town staff and inspected in the field prior to start of construction. Two, a landscape agreement slash easement with the property owner of one oh five Walker Hill Road to place and maintain shade trees along southwest side of the Walker Hill driveway shall be recorded in land records prior to filing of the final site plan. Three, provide a note on the final site plan. Quote, installation of the playground equipment shall be performed by a certified playground installer to ensure all public safety handbook recommendations are followed and meets all A S T M technical manufacturing standards for public use playground equipment servicing and fencing, end of quote. Four, provide a note of the final site plan, quote, all materials and equipment listed in project narrative are shown on either sheet A dash one-ten of the architectural plans by the Sullivan Group. The Trident Square Courtyard Materials images by S L R or the playground equipment in the Playworld Plan shall be incorporated into the project unless alternative equipment, materials and equipment are approved by Office of Planning and Development Staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate, end of quote. Five, provide a note on the plans, quote, the easement to allow public access to the public playground and walking trails on the site shall be recorded prior to the approval of the certificate of site plan compliance, end of quote. Six, provide a note on the final site plan, quote, any revisions to the plan required by Groton Utilities, the Fire Marshal or any other outside agency shall require additional review and approval by the Office of Planning and Development Staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate. The utility designed for Groton Utility shall be, shall minimize the disturbance of the landscape buffering and screening, design and requirements on the site. Provide, provide, or seven, I'm sorry. Provide a note on the final site plan, quote, any additional rooftop equipment or use of the roof from what is shown on the approved architectural plans shall require additional review and approvals by the Office of Planning and Development Staff or the Planning and Zoning Convention as appropriate. I inserted those, those words to be similar to the previous one. Eight, any staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the, the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Yeah.
Well, good luck with this, uh, development.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Change, change, Groton.
Thank you.
So this has TIF funding for this?
No, no.
No.
No, no.
No.
I was just curious. It sounded like they were talking like it did.
It's not downtown.
Hmm.
It's not really in the downtown area. It's just up Route 12.
Yeah. Is that the only place you can do TIF?
Only where the master plans approved. I'm sorry. Yeah, where there are master plans approved, so downtown.
Just downtown, okay. I thought it had more coverage.
There's one in the city as well.
City has, maybe that's, yeah, city has one, yeah. Okay, moving on then, we're going to, uh, next item is S I T twenty-one eleven, proposed apartment building three thirty-four Long Hill Road. So the applicant present uh, presentation.
Yep, um, just getting them in here. Greg, are you going to do the, the presentation? Or Mark? With two?
I'll stand by for the architectural part, but I, I certainly won't do the site plan part.
All right, Greg, are you there?
Yeah.
There we go.
Sorry. I was napping. Am I up?
You are.
Do you want me to, uh, share, share a screen?
Yep, if you have the ability to do that, yep.
Um, do I need, okay, there we go. All right, good evening. My name's Greg Fetis with Fetis Engineering and office at seventy Essex Street, Mystic, Connecticut, representing uh, Nick Sahin, the owner of the property. Um, and I'm going to share my screen and put up the site plan. Uh, so we are proposing a twenty-one u- unit apartment building, uh, with associated, uh, some associated outdoor parking as well as, uh, basement parking. The majority of the parking is for the units is underneath the building. Um, this, this property is between the Hampton Inn to the, I guess it would be the, uh, northwest and the Applebee's to the southeast. Um, I'm gonna flip. This is, uh, sheet one, which basically is the cover sheet and basically, uh, lays out the, the twelve sheet, uh, plan set. And I'll go, uh, pretty quickly if there's any, just because it's late, if there's any questions on anything, we can follow up at the end or as I go, feel, feel free to enter.
It's easier to finish up your presentation and, and answer anything afterwards.
Okay.
Cause we, then we go to town staff for their input.
Yeah. So there's two, um, two existing parcels that were with the time of when we started, there were two, uh, two individual, uh, buildings on each of the parcels. Those have since been demolished. Uh, there's, uh, wetlands located to the, uh, to the northeast. You can see it shaded, uh, actually you can see it just on the back of the property line. The shaded area is the, uh, basically non-disturbance area to the fifty-foot, uh, setback. And then you can see the hundred-foot review line. We did receive, uh, well, and to approval, um, for the plan we're presenting to you tonight. Uh, so that's the existing conditions plan. Uh, the demolition plan, again, uh, the buildings have been taken down at this time. Uh, but basically it's the same plan with, with buildings being removed. Uh, you can see the existing curb cut, uh, is kind of located more in the center of the site. Uh, you'll see on the next sheet that we're moving it, uh, a little bit to the south on Long Hill Road. And here you can see the, uh, the Applebee's building and the, uh, Hampton Inn to the, to the north. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan, uh, which again shows, uh, entering two-way traffic coming in off Long Hill Road. Uh, there's, uh, the front of the building where there's seven parking spaces, a handicap access or a handicap, uh, space. And then a drive that ru- runs along, um, the, uh, south uh, side of the building. Uh, down, there's five spaces down below, uh, with an entrance underneath the, the building. Um, uh, for the majority of the parking. Uh, there's a retaining wall that runs, just retaining walls that run on both sides on the adjacent properties. Uh, so we're actually, uh, those walls are in, I wouldn't say they're in the best shape, uh, uh, but we'll be doing some filling alongside each of those walls, which will help, uh, support the long-term, uh, the. Support the long term, uh, the longevity of the, of the adjacent walls, uh, we're proposing a wall, uh, basically down. On the, uh, eastern and east sou- northeastern end of the property that will. Uh, kind of be a buffer, uh, seventy, it's about seventy-five feet plus or minus. Uh, from the, from the wetland, uh, that's down, you can see, uh, in the northeast corner of the property. So really a fifty-foot non disturbance and then there's twenty-five feet, uh, regrading. Uh, in our storm water, which I'll go over in a second, um. It's basically mimics the, uh, the current conditions, which basically are sheep flow towards the wetlands. And we're returning, uh, proposed storm water to that condition. Uh, on this plan, we're also showing a connection to the Hampton Inn. Um, the hatched area is on the Hampton Inn property. Which is reconfiguring, uh, that area is that, I think we lose one parking space on the Hampton Inn property. Uh, but basically it will create cross access between the two properties. And then similarly on the, uh, Applebee's property, um. Will also be, uh. Providing a connection there, um, and that you'll be, they'll be losing two spaces, um. The Hampton Inn still, uh, had eighty-three spaces that were, or eighty-two spaces that were required. Uh, they have currently eighty-three, this will remove one space, uh, so they'll still meet the requirement of eighty-two spaces. Applebee's had a hundred and twenty-two spaces, uh, currently, they only, I think it was seventy-seven that, that were required. So they have plenty of spaces and the, uh, taking away two spaces will, um. Not affect their approval. This will allow, uh, vehicles to basically get out to the light on the side street adjacent to Applebee's. Some of our, probably some. Our traffic, uh, some of it will come through the Applebee's to just basically go into the, uh, the parking area here. Uh, the majority of our residents will park underneath the building. Uh, so our zoning table, we meet all the zoning requirements, um, bicycle parking. Uh, parking requirements, we're. I think we're more towards the maximum, uh, parking, uh, there's a man and max. Uh, hike calculation, uh, detail. Uh, located on this map, uh, notes as required by the, uh, zoning regs. Um, gonna shift to sheet. Five, which is the utility and grading plan, uh, basically a water main that comes off of, for utilities, uh. Water main that comes off of Long Hill Road, uh, to access the site, the site will, or the building will be, uh. Uh, sprinkled, um. And then, uh, the sewer comes, actually comes out the back, there's a connection, current connection that comes, you can see the sewer line is just off our property here. Um, it cuts through the wetlands, uh, but we have a, an existing. Um, lateral already there, so we're just connecting into that. Just blow this up just a little bit, uh. So the storm water, uh. Basically the water, uh, there's catch basins along the front of the building, uh, they run down the, uh. The access drive that gets to the back of the building, um, and they empty into a. Kind of a small detention basin slash rain garden, um, there's underground infiltration under the driveway. That captured all the roof water, uh, that also goes into a portion of a, um. Another rain garden detention basin on the north, uh, would be the northern corner of the property. Captures some runoff running down, uh, between the retaining wall and the building. Uh, that all dumps into, it circulated back into this, um. Tension basin, that will overflow, uh, basically through the retaining wall into a level spreader. Returning it back to a sheep flow condition at about the seventy-five foot, uh, mark from the, from the wetlands. And then it just flows in a sheep flow condition as it does today. Again, this shows, uh, the grading, uh, basically you're going down. A story coming down here, uh, cause you enter the, the first floor. Go down the drive, you enter, uh, into the garage, one level below the first floor. So there's a, uh, just I forgot to mention, there is a, uh, trash enclosure located, uh, adjacent to this. There's only five spots on the back here, so this one spot is for access to the trash enclosure. Uh, there's recycling bins inside, uh, the building, uh, in the basement area. This is the soil and erosion control, um. Uh, silt fence basically located down gradient at the fifty foot mark, uh, we have some stockpile areas identified up. Up in, uh, lower section and the upper section, anti-tracking pad coming off a long hill road. Um, silt sacks and all the catch basins during construction. Traditional hay, hay bales as necessary, um. And the, so, uh, the applicable votes for. Uh, turf establishment and, uh, erosion controls and so forth, um. Our, our landscape and lighting plan, uh, basically, um. Area lights, uh, to light up the parking and then going down, um. The aisle way and then the light down to bottom, um. And the landscaping, uh, ten, ten foot, uh, off a long hill road. Uh, a little buffering along, uh, the Applebee's property and then, um. I'm landscaping down at the, uh, a bottom above the, um, the high side of the retaining wall, everything. Northeast of the retaining wall will basically go back to a natural, uh, vegetated area. And then, uh, just the landscaping requirement table showing that we meet, uh, meet the requirements. Uh, the plant lists and planting details. Uh, sheet. The next sheet just showing that we meet line of, uh, line of sight, which is, uh, two hundred and fifty feet in each direction, uh, coming off the proposed. A driveway, um. We do expect, uh, D O T's gonna limit, uh, turns, no left turns out of here. The access through Applebee's will allow us to make a left turn at the light. Uh, you can see Hampton Inn, uh. Similarly, they, they allow no, you know, no left turns going out of the Hampton Inn property, which will actually. Allow Hampton Inn to kind of cut through our site to get, uh, make a left turn onto Long Hill Road. Uh, detail sheets, just the necessary details for. Sidewalks, ramps, uh, handicap signage, uh, we got existing coverage and proposed coverage details. The bike rack detail and the dumpster enclosure detail. I'm sure I'm getting everything here. There are several detail sheets here. Yeah, so handicap space, which is ban accessible, then, uh, typical, uh, water main trench, um. Next these detail sheet is the catch basins, again ramping, retaining wall. Uh, our sign which meets, um. I'm not sure that's what it's going to be called, but we just had to come up with something, um. Yeah, and then necessary details are required for site plan, uh, checklist. Uh, we got water. Uh, details for services, rust blocks, um. Trenching. And then our underground infiltration details, which I believe is the last sheet. Which, uh, that does capture all the roof water and our storm water calculations do, um. Keep all the storms through a hundred below existing, uh, conditions, so the proposed runoff in volumes. Are, are less than, uh, existing. Um, also, uh, might have just. Switch over to, let's see. So, uh, Mark Camo is here to talk about, and I'll let him take over. I'll share my screen, which has his drawings. I believe he's, does he need to be? Make a panelist or made a panelist?
I, I can hear you, Greg.
Oh, okay, so you're all set, Mark, just let me know when you want me to. Flip through the sheets.
All right. I guess starting on the bottom level, uh, it's, uh, under the building where we've got parking, as you can see. Uh, to the left, uh, there are, uh, storage bins, which will probably be caged, uh, for each unit. Providing, uh, storage, which is kind of a rarity in, in apartment provisions. Um, stairwells to the left and right, uh, elevator in the center core. You can go ahead to the next. Page. On the, uh, on the, on the main level, um, main level, meaning kind of off the street. Um, so the, the apartments are all black and white and there's, uh, the blue shading shows a community space on this floor. Which is, um, kind of like a library, um, it's, it's, it's behind a laundry core. And it, it, it's bookshelves and a place to have, you know, community trading of books and, and videos and things like that. Um, the, uh, sort of chartreuse color in the lower left that you see is typical, um. Uh, of the balconies that you see. For each unit, you can go ahead to the next floor. And then it repeats onto the second level. And then keep on going, repeats to the third level. For the most part. And. On the rooftop, so we, 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 we make use of the roof, uh, for some community spaces, um, uh. Places for, for, uh, people that live there to go up and, um, we, we had fire pits, but they're gone. They, they didn't make it, um, good idea, not on a roof, I guess. Um, but, 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 but it would be kind of nice up there, uh, to, um, I think we underutilize our roofs. And, um, and, and the, th- there's two H V A C cores that you see, uh, with fencing around them. That are located, uh, internally enough within the roof that according to sight lines and the parapet height, you'll never see the, the equipment. Uh, on there. So you can go ahead to the next slide. So this is my revised, uh, on the left, that what you would see from, uh, from the street. Which, I, I, at the previous application, I, I, I had to revise this, uh. It was seen as, as too boring, uh, or, or whatever, I forget the terminology that was used and seeing the previous application, which looked scarily similar to. To this building, uh, I, I, I don't see why, um, but, but I do like what we've, uh, revised and come up with. Um, we've taken, uh, on the front of the building, which is the, the left west elevation. And we, uh, we're, we're using a, a stone veneer on the, on the lower level of the part that projects out toward you. And then we, we transition, you can see the stairwell in there that makes its way up in a hidden line, um, behind the facade. And then we transition it to a, to a shingle to give it some texture and then up to, uh. Where the stairwell comes out onto the roof, we've got some transom windows with an elliptical window up there and a, um, a standoff protruding gable. Uh, so there's a lot of activity going on, on the facade, I, 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 I would say I'm, I'm much happier with, with this one, with what we've come up with. And we're changing, um, uh, material, uh, color and, and scale. Uh, on the far left and the far right of that elevation, we've got six inch exposure, um, clapboard. And then, uh, to the right of the stairwell core, uh, we have a wide band pro dema, um. With, with a rain shield, typical detail that you see a lot, use now. Uh, and we'll change those colors from grays to totes, uh, kind of up in the air still, we have, we have to do a color palette analysis. But it'll, it'll be mostly, you know, light earth tones, um, something subtle. Um, and then up at the parapet, we've, we've got a, a deep projection with bracketry, so that'll, that'll give the parapet some depth as well. Uh, and then the rest of the building just kind of wraps around with, um, u- utilizing some of the similar, uh, details. Uh, borrowing from the, from the front facade, um, with the exception of the, of the balconies, which, um. Which the balcony areas where the balconies are, the facades are, are pushed in, but the balconies are pulled out. Uh, so it, it, it does give a lot of, um, breakup of the rhythm of the, of the, of the length of the building. Um, so it will, it will be, uh, well, you know, it's sandwiched in between, you know, two, two larger buildings. Being, being the Hampton Inn and, and Applebee's, and you won't really ever see these elevations the way you see them on paper. Cause you'll never get a vantage point to be able to, uh, to see that. And that's the north facade, showing the slope down to the left. And I'll, I'll leave the rest, any questions that come up?
Anything else regarding the application? If not, we'll turn it over to staff for. Their report.
Thank you, um, so as Greg mentioned, this project is on two lots. Um, those lots have to be combined before the plans are filed in land records. Um, you may recall before the buildings were demoed, they were two retail, uh, facilities. It looked like they were old houses that were turned into small shops. Um, on either side is the Hampton Inn and the Applebee's, when those projects were approved. Uh, driveway connectors were required, um, in order to get those projects and the, the traffic from those projects. Out to the light at Culver Avenue, um, both the Hampton Inn and Applebee's have retaining walls behind their building. Because of the slope, um, and because it was a requirement of the wetland agency when the wetland permitting was done. So that the grading didn't get too close to the wetland, so again, that's why you see, um, a retaining wall on this project. Um, in the rear of it. Um. Let's see, um, so as, as Greg mentioned, um. A number of the requirements for multi-unit developments have been met on the site, there is storage underneath the building for each of the units. Um, there's appropriate community space. Um, the storm water design was approved by the inland wetland agency for, uh, water quality, uh, treatment. Prior to discharge out to the wetland, um, I also want to note that this application, um, was submitted in May. Um, so it is not subject to the changes that were, that became effective in August. So, um, some of the requirements for, um, electric vehicle parking, things like that, they don't have to comply with. Um. The, um, the existing, uh, driveway that is, that serves the two, uh, retail units is, is going to be closed off. Um, and the new driveway will be shifted towards Applebee's. Um, sidewalks will be placed, um, in the area where the, the old driveway was. Uh, you can see there's also, um, an interior sidewalk to get pedestrian. You can see there's also an interior sidewalk to get pedestrians, you know, from the, the front edge walk out to the building. I think that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Okay, so we'll open it up then to commissioners. I'll start with you, Kevin.
Sure, mine just. Is really just on the top of the building. I'm looking at the, the east elevation. And so where are those units that we don't see? Because it looks great to me. Looks like there's trees up there, but where are those? Top units?
The air conditioning units?
Yes.
Condensers?
Sure.
So they're within these. On the site plan here, you can see these two rectangles.
Yep.
So they're kind of in the center of the building. If you, if we. Let's see. So these, those rectangles we show are additional screening separate of the parapet that runs around the building.
Right. And how, how high are those?
So we made a note on the site plan, because if you look. You can see. You can see the AC, you can see the condenser here kind of peeking out.
Sure.
So we just made a note on the site plan that they would be, the, the screening would be at least 42 inches. And/or the units would be less than 42 inches. Just to make sure that you wouldn't see them, even though they're kind of in the interior of the building.
Okay. And those two trees are actually physically placed on top of the building?
No, no, they're. Let me see if I'm unmuted. They, they would be off in the distance.
Oh. Okay. Did we see the plan for those trees?
There will be some, I'm assuming there will be some stuff on top of the, some, some greenery up, up on top.
Sure.
But not those.
Yeah, that's my point. Okay, thank you. This is a simple, simple question. Just, Roy, I just, we love, you love. Just how, as we look at the top, I think you've done a good job there. And so as long as you hide those things, that certainly fits what my question was. So thank you.
Okay, so. So do you have any?
Yeah, it's funny. I was looking at the roof too. Look at the topography there, and that building is really going to be fairly high up. Was about 140 at the highest, 140 feet of sea level. So, yeah, I couldn't imagine those trees are actually on the roof. But I'm not sure they're next to the building either. But I do think. It's a little different perspective. I was trying to get an idea on that. You certainly have commercial businesses on each side. Then it slopes a lot to the east. On the other side, you have apartments and things too. So I think it'll probably fit pretty well in that location. It seems like a nicely designed building. And the apartment isn't quite good, and I'm sure people will be enjoying the rooftop as they can. Probably be quite pleasant up there. That's a little bit farther from Y95. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara?
Yes, when I first saw it, I thought that's an awful lot of lot coverage. How, how close is it to the maximum?
Just double check that.
It's in your table.
Yeah, the max, the maximum building coverage is in the table, which is 30% allowed, and we're at 14.1.
Oh. Okay.
That's building coverage. I know we were.
Yeah.
Wetlands did push us back on the, the.
Right, that's, I'm probably not thinking of that back part of the lot. Just, I'm thinking just to the retaining wall. It seemed like a lot, but apparently it isn't. So it's just my perspective. As far as the roof goes. We had what I think is unfortunate situation, another building where the roof was you, is being used for people and, you know, sitting around lounge chairs and so forth. And the concern is how high is the barrier? Between the people and, you know, falling off? Is that, is that some kind of fire code thing or, or, or what?
Yeah, that's regulated by the building code. So it'll, it, the code says a minimum of 42 inches. Which. If you were to walk up to a 42 inch rail, four stories off the ground, you, you might not feel comfortable. So in a situation like this, I would, I prefer it at 48 inches. Because if you then, if you go over that rail, you kind of earned it. Because it, it, it takes quite an effort to, to, to be able to get over 48 inches.
Right. Okay, and I can see something that high is going to screen somewhat. But if people are standing up, obviously they can see outside and enjoy views. And yet they won't be in any danger, hopefully. Or distract other people. Okay, that was, that was sort of my only questions. Thank you.
Al? You have any questions?
Yeah, one thing I'm. I think. I think you've addressed the thing about the screening and I, I, I don't remember seeing, well, actually, we probably have it here, but I didn't see a detail on what that railing was going to be. Is it still the standard railing, which means you're saying four inches between, between the members? So that really. Is that what that is? Is that, you know, four, four and a half inches between members?
Yeah.
Okay, so all right. So, and you do have something in there that says however high the screen is, unlike this picture that we're now looking at. However, high the, the units end up, that's how high the railing needs ends up or vice versa?
Yeah, the units actually, I think are going to be a little bit smaller. They won't be as high as the rail.
Well, we, as Barbara mentioned, we have been surprised, and in my career, I can't tell you how many times I've been surprised. And we're kind of done being surprised. So really, they need to be equal, especially actually, you were saying, we're not going to see this view very much. Well, you want to see it dead on. Well, I have a pretty good view of the sides. Applebee's is a smaller building and it's set back. The hotel is set back a bit. You actually have a really good view of this. And it's smart, like you've got a nice looking building here, but the hill actually comes downhill towards this from the Applebee's side. So I think you'd be surprised at what you'd be able to see. So I think having, so long as it says in it someplace that whatever that railing is, is what the, if you're going to use that for screening for the air conditioning units, then those two need to be at least equal, or the railing needs to be higher. And I don't think we can count on your HVAC contractor obeying that rule. It needs to be somebody that's based right in it, so that whatever one ends up higher, that the railing must be higher or equal. And that's, that's got to be it. For the, the driveway connecting to Applebee's. I see that you've located it where it locates very nicely for your back parking. But it doesn't locate it very well for Applebee's. You didn't really show Applebee's in there. Applebee's driveway that goes straight out is, as you're showing there, much more to the left. Where. And you're expecting some traffic through there. I hope there's some traffic through there, because that's a good thing to do. But I say it works very nicely for you. It doesn't work for Applebee's. It just takes you out where you need to immediately, you're aimed at some cars. You're going to need to make a sharp right, then a sharp left right away. Is there anything hard and fast about that driveway? I, I think I'd rather, I'd rather see it moved directly over that island to the left, which lines it up with the Applebee's rear driveway, which is where that is.
This way?
The other way.
The other way up here?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, these are, these are parking spaces across here with their, with their interior landscape islands.
Yeah, I know.
So any, any kind of where we.
In this case, it would take, if you're going to revise, you're going to revise something anyway. So, and here you're, you're, you're showing losing a island on the right side of what you're adapting. And I'm saying, no, take out the island on the left and adapt whatever you want. But I'm looking at, well, this is easier if I just share. I've got a Google map thing up here. So you see what I'm talking about? And I'll go to share screen. If I can do that. Just thinking about it here. Okay, it's an update of, of, of our privacy things is what it's doing to me here. So give me one second. Okay, I'm all right with that.
There it is.
Ah, okay. So there's Applebee's driveway. And right now you're showing the connection over here. So seems like you go straight through, which will put it on the side of your building, but you have nothing happening there. So I don't know if there's any problem. It kind of doesn't really hurt your flow. It just puts an extra twist in your backyard, but it straightens out what's happening to Applebee's trying to get out and into, well, mostly out, I suppose, right? What else? Anybody else's opinion on that? But take a look at your own, and I think this makes more sense, even though it comes into kind of the side of your building, but there's no parking on that side. So you're kind of free to maneuver.
Well, it just makes it a little bit challenging because we're kind of coming down the hill there, but. I can pull mine back up if. Yeah, let me just flip to the grading. As we are coming down the hill there.
Right.
I think we're at about an eight percent slope. And it kind of flattens out down here. It just makes.
Gotcha.
And I think it just.
Is that where it meet, is that where it more meets the grade? Is that more of a grade driven thing then?
Well, we're entering the, underneath the building here. So this, this kind of whole back area where the parking is. And at the, basically the bottom of the, the, the slope driveway here is relatively flat. Just. And I think transitioning grades here. Might be a little more challenging up here and making kind of a right. A right turn. There's going to be a challenge.
No, actually, I don't think it'd be a, a challenge to make the right turn. I'm only, mostly, I mean, you've got the room to work at a radius in there. And there's nothing else happening there. The entrance is right in the middle, right? So you've got at least 25 feet coming out of that. You have a dead flat in the back. Oh, buddy, you have parking back there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like if you come out parking how it seemed like where they placed it, it's, it's a better run from the apartment side, worse run in Applebee's, but a good run from the apartment.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's absolutely. That's what I was noticing. It's, it's, it's exactly right for the parking. And then once you get to Applebee's, then you're kind of twisting and turning.
Yep. Yeah, I think you're just making a right and then a left to get into their main access way. I think it slows people down. I mean, from a traffic standpoint. I think the extra little bit of maneuvering would, would, you know. Instead of kind of a straight shot, you wouldn't want people kind of just shooting across there into our lot, but.
I don't think you're going to have much traffic going into your lot, because they can always come, come into it. It's mostly people exiting your lot. But I think maybe I'd feel better if, if it was shifted. Right now you've got. You said Applebee's got, has a ton of extra space. Maybe right now you're just showing one extra, one parking space between what you're clearing and where the existing island is on the left side of of your area, your, your construction area. And I'm thinking everybody's want to come out of there and immediately want to zigzag and get around. So maybe there's just, shouldn't be any parking there. I mean, I don't think they'll begrudge the loss of four spaces if they've got so many extra, but that might be what it needs. Personally, I never, almost never see anybody parked back there in Applebee's, but that's just my observation.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I think they're overparked by 50 spaces and probably more than that.
So maybe just, maybe, maybe this works a little better if in fact that, that one parking space that you left wasn't there, it just was island so that you can easily maneuver around it and not maneuver around the one car that might park there.
Yeah, that's a good point.
In fact, you can actually radius a bit. Get a little more planting and radius that pretty widely. So.
Yeah, we, I mean, we showed. Once Applebee's gets a hold of this, I'm, I'm guessing they're going to reconfigure this a little bit, because they have an obligation to.
Right.
Way in on this. And I think it was maybe part of the motion or potential motion that this kind of would all get worked out prior to a CO and so forth on our, our property.
Well, I suppose if rather have Applebee's come up with something and have to come back, I think I'd be okay if that, that space just wasn't there. And that was part of the proposal was to just radius that whole thing in there. So that it, it already kind of works with Applebee's without having to further figure out how to make it work.
Yeah, so I think we showed dashed, new dashed islands here on both sides with the 24 foot way, aisle way.
Right.
So you're talking about this space.
Right.
So there is a 10, an eight foot island on either side of the proposed.
And I'm saying, take out that, right. So you've got to come out, you're, you're kind of forcing people to come straight out, then make a hard right to make a hard left. If in fact you're just radius that whole area.
Oh, radius this right around like this.
Exactly, exactly. It sends you where you need to go.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, do you have any?
Yeah, I, just a few things. I'm getting tired. I would kind of agree with what Hal said. That was one of my, and my notes here that I'm keeping. So when someone's leaving the Hampton Inn, they're going to, they could potentially cross this property, cross Applebee's onto Culver Drive. And, and I, and I would like to see that like anything that can slow the traffic down, if they're going to be doing that, is a good thing. Route, I mean, the Long Hill Road is divided in this area, correct? I don't believe it is.
No, I don't think so.
So people traveling on Route One who are traveling south can make a left-hand turn into this property? That'll be controlled by the DOT encroachment permit, which we have. Until we get town approval, we, we can't really move full speed ahead on that.
Yeah. There's nothing to stop them though. It's just a double white, the yellow line. You're allowed to cross it.
That's correct. If you look at the Hampton, the Hampton Inn, let me. It's just a real traffic mess there. It seems to me always trying to get across that is difficult. Yeah, I think it's going to be a challenge to do that. If you look at the Hampton Inn here, let me just blow that up a little bit. So, you know, they they placed islands, so it for versus people that only make a right, leaving the Hampton Inn, but they didn't do that. They could have done the same thing, preventing cars from making a left. Not sure that it's signed, no left turns in. But they did not island it in such that someone could make a left into the Hampton Inn.
There's actually a left turn lane into the Hampton Inn. Well, there's no light there, but there's a left turn lane. Southbound.
Oh, right.
To catch you with the Hampton. To catch you with the Hampton Inn.
And does it continue how to the apartment voting?
No.
Okay.
Because because there's left turn lane going the other direction, which goes into Ronald Road, which is directly across from the Hampton Inn.
Yep, I see it.
Yeah, so I could see DOT, since that's already there, limiting no left turns or or preventing left turns into our site.
Then anyone who is coming into this site then from say like the highway, which would be a half of your traffic, it's gonna have to go past it down to Culver Road and then across to Applebee's and into your site.
Yeah, if DOT restricts that maneuver, yes.
So more reason for me to say that that I would like to see that traffic slowed uh across those parking lots and uh, you know, uh, I I it just seems like kind of a dangerous situation to have as much traffic is going to be going there all the way to the Hampton Inn is going to be using it, you and the other one all across the Applebee's lot. It just seems like it's could potentially be creating a dangerous situation and and anything that can be done to mitigate that uh speed there, uh, I think would be beneficial.
Yes, I would. I would agree with that. And I think the current location and uh Commissioner Zod's recommendation to maybe put in a a bigger island here. And maybe that's a stop, uh, maybe we put a stop sign and a stop bar there. So stopping traffic, they make the right turn and they they exit out of uh the Applebee's.
Yeah. I mean, is that is that something that would that that we would call a technical item or is that something that we can address at this point? Do you? I mean, I don't know if other people have
The proposal, the proposal leaves this sort of up in the air where it says they have to coordinate the construction of the connector driveways with the adjacent property owners.
Yeah.
It's really off site. I don't know if we can do.
Well, I mean, the the other thing is is that I think that if we were to ask that the cut be made where that island is, I I mean, either that left and that right occurs in Applebee's lot or it occurs on this property.
One of the, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if we can't control it off site, or if I can't be assured that you're not going to have a straight shot across here. Uh, then I'm then then maybe I'm more inclined to think that it should be moved to the where the island is, but then there's other issues that go with that. So I'm sort of stuck, but uh anyway, let me move on because I'm I'm exhausted. Uh, elevator access, does the building have elevator access?
Yes.
Does, okay. And the fire marshal is weighed in on all this stuff, getting across to Applebee's and all that other business.
He has reviewed the plans, yep.
But does he review it after? Does he review what Applebee's proposes when that's all worked out too?
Absolutely, they'll, that has to be worked out before this is filed in land records and check prints will be reviewed by the fire marshal among other agencies.
Okay, trash and recycling, where's that?
Uh, so recycling is uh underneath in the garage, people just bring down their recycling and put it in bins. Um, and then the trash enclosure is located uh I guess it would be in the southeast corner of the lot, just adjacent to the rain garden.
Okay. All right, that's all. I I'm hoping that uh that this traffic issue can be resolved. Sounds like some of it is out of our purview, but uh my concern is and it and it seems like no matter what, where it's put, you're gonna get a jog double jog in in the traffic pattern. So I suppose uh one way or the other, it's gonna slow them down somewhat, but that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll so all the approvals that are required by other agencies have been obtained.
Uh, well, not by the state.
No, I didn't mean the state. I meant the town, like the fire marshal and where.
Or site purposes.
Yeah.
Right, first, I mean, they will definitely, you know, when the building permit comes in, there's a whole another set of reviews.
Yeah. And from I think this is the one that they had some two bedroom apartments in this development. And they, if you look at them, they only show that there are three seats at the dining table. How does that work out?
I didn't see any two bedroom ones.
Yeah, there are.
They're right at the edges, ends of the building. But is there enough room?
Oh, okay.
Hmm. But is there enough room for the ta- for people to eat?
You're being out of chair.
I mean, is that done because it's too tight? I mean, you can't add a chair right next to the stove.
Wouldn't fail. You you but you can move it out uh
Enough room to walk around.
Yeah, if you rotate the table ninety degrees and and turn the the length access uh rather.
Because it doesn't look good the way you have it laid out.
Yeah, then that's that's.
Where do those trees come from?
The same place. Okay. And on the, when you look at the roof plan, there were some things around the what are those black circles?
Planters.
Those are planters.
Yeah.
Many trees.
Yeah.
They're the ones that have the big leaves that hang over the roof.
They they grow three feet a year.
All right, I didn't have any other questions, haven't been addressed. Is the applicant seen a proposed motion?
Yes.
Have any concerns with it, Craig?
I don't think so, no.
So anyone on the, any of the commissioners have any concerns with a proposed motion?
No.
I don't know if we have to. You said that the uh screening for the H V H vac units are gonna be included the way they were talked about on the drawing.
That's right.
We showed we showed on the site, yeah, we showed on the site plan. Um that's why we showed that specifically uh, because it was a question and the staff comment. Um so proposed forty two inch equipment screening on roof.
Hmm.
And that's in addition to the parapet around the side, so.
Okay, so it won't look like Three Water Street.
That's the goal.
That would be a challenge to make it look like that.
No, I mean, they're units. Haven't you seen it?
Oh, I, oh, yeah, yeah.
Can't miss them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
We get surprised.
As we're trying to prevent surprises, get too many. Okay, no one has any other concerns with the motion. I'll make a motion to approve a site plan. S I T twenty one dash eleven for a proposed apartment building three thirty four Long Hill Road with the following modifications. One, the owner shall coordinate the construction of the connector driveways with the adjacent property owners. The connectors shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of site plan compliance. Two, the lot shall be combined prior to filing the site plans and land records. Three, a note shall be placed on the final site plan that states, quote, any revisions to the plan required by the fire marshal, Grattan Utilities, the Connecticut Department of Transportation, or any other outside agency requires review and approval by the Office of Planning and Development Services or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate, end of quote. For the construction easement for grading on three hundred Long Hill Road shall be filed in land records at the time of site plan filing. Five, all staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Move some second and discussion on the motion.
I have an item. We're just because we're just talking about, because I do not see exactly what we were talking about on this submittal, which I'm okay if it's added afterwards, but it says propose forty two inch equipment screening. And I'm see, that's the note. It says proposed forty two inches. That's fine. It's in fact, that's that's fine. But I don't see anything that limits the height of the units to the top height of those screens. And that's that's kind of where it falls apart because the air conditioning guy comes along. And somebody says, yeah, put it up forty two inches. And he says, I can make him forty two inches high. And he puts down one foot a base and then puts a forty two inch unit on top of it. And that's how that's how this happens. Everybody thinks they're doing the right thing.
Right.
So I need something that says that maybe right on that plan, propose forty two inch roof screening on roof. And something that says that the air conditioning units will not extend above the height of the of the screens.
I thought they said something about forty eight inches.
Well, they did.
People screening.
Right, how was fifty four inches, right? So so I like what Hal said.
Yeah, I don't care how high it is, so long as it's higher than as high or higher than the mechanical unit.
That's right.
So we did just in our response letter, we did state that um roof equipment will be forty two inches or less in height. That's in the response letter. We couldn't, we can add that into the plan as a technical item, I think.
I I I have this fear about how tall the the mechanical units will be because I don't know what the what zero is. And to a mechanical guy, zero is on top of his sleepers, so it ends up taller. So I need something that says where the top is relative to the screens. I need to those two have be equal.
Okay, we can add that to the as a technical item to both the architectural plans and the uh site plan.
Great.
All right. So do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay. Are you satisfied with that health? So
Yes, that's why.
All right, okay, so it'll be a technical item. So we'll go up and see. Does anyone have any any concerns with the motion? Any comments, questions? If not, then we'll vote on the on the motion to approve the site plan S I T twenty one eleven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like an interesting design. I like to see parking underneath and the roof being used. That's good.
Definitely an upgrade.
Hmm, it is, isn't it? Little bit, okay, we have no old business, new business, new applications. Do we have any new applications?
No, none.
None, okay. It's getting late and referrals. No referrals, right? Commission reports, report a chair, I report. Does anybody in the commission have anything to report?
I just have a few things that I would like to address if I could.
Go ahead.
Got my laundry list here. Uh, precious memories is uh Nancy Steinberg had an issue with sidewalk there. I don't think we've heard from them yet. Is is that something that's still coming?
It is. It is. We've had some conversations with precious memories. You will be seeing them.
All right, I just don't want it to fall off the radar. The definitions, oh, Deb, did that letter that I, those definitions, did they get sent out? For the hotel?
The definite, oh, oh, we were going to send those out the next time we talked about.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I just want to make sure. I mean, I still have the short term rentals on my radar. And I would recommend I recommend uh the New London Day, if you go online, Eric Treister uh is proposing uh short term rental regulations in ledgerd. Uh, I don't know if it would work in Groton. Um, I have some questions about what they're proposing, but uh, you know, we're, we we need to deal with this, I think. And we should all educate ourselves as well as we can. There's a lot of information out there, but uh I I I could send it along. If you guys want to look at it, that'd be great. But uh, it's like thirty five pages, but I gotta say it's pretty thorough and and uh interesting to read. But once again, I don't know how effective it's gonna be, but we'll see. Um, I I would like it's addressed at every one of these applications re- recently, and I just wanna uh, see if we could have a conversation about bicycle storage. Um, you know, it keeps coming up and for me, it it seems like it's an easy fix. Um, but I think that it it needs to be done and soon, if we could. So long as there's some agreement. Um, the other thing that I kind of noticed today that I would like to see, and I don't know if it can be included in these applications, but I think it would be helpful if we had some off site uh cross sections or whatever, because when I'm looking at that apartment building that we were looking at up on Walker Hill Road, I would have liked to see how it relates to the neighbors' houses and the highway on a cross section kind of a a drawing. I think it would have been helpful. And I don't know if that's something that is part of uh you know, how our applications are just put together, but often I feel like we're looking at these things with a microscope. And you can't, and it's, you know, you you everything around it needs to be included at some level, too, I think.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mike, because I had that same issue with Three Water Street, right? Wasn't sure really how that was gonna look and surprisingly good, but surprisingly large, right?
Yeah, no, it's deceiving and it throws you. Yeah, you can't, you know, you know, it's like you're looking at the tree and not the forest. I want to see something. I want to see the forest too.
Well, I think we also asked for that with the oral school, right?
Correct.
We did.
The word, sure, how that was gonna.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
And 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 I understand that it can be difficult because, you know, you could be going off in a lot of you know, different directions, but I think it would be helpful if you could see that. And maybe not on every application, but it seems like some of these I I feel like that that whole thing with I ninety five and how close it was to it, you don't see it if you just look at the you know, you you wouldn't even know that I ninety five was as close as it was. It's just pretty darn close. And it's and and you're approaching the highway, you're going uphill, people are hitting the gas when they get there, the cars are even getting louder. So anyway, that's that's my laundry list for tonight, but mostly I want to see that bicycle storage addressed. And if we could figure that out, I think there could be some agreement on that. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else have anything?
I was glad to see that uh some of the advertising around the spot fence has finally gone away. It was really getting very uh ugly. And about two thirds of it maybe has gone away, but the fence along the uh Huntington roadside is still plastered with ads wherever they're called. And I'd like to see those gone too. Thank you very much.
Anybody have anything else? Report as staff, do you have anything to report then?
Just a couple of very brief things. Um, so the Navy is working with the the Scranton School System to sponsor a contest to come up with a an honorary name for Crystal Lake Road as it approaches the the base entrance. Um, I just wanted to put that on your radar because there's a process for naming roads that involves a public hearing. Even if it's an honorary name, I mean, it won't change the addresses of any of the properties along there, but um, they're gonna have a contest with the school kids. That on your radar.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
William Sealy Road. William Sealy Road.
Why?
Crystal Lake Road?
William Sealy Road. William Sealy, I don't know if you're aware, he was the first, uh, Grotton. Casualty in World War Two. And there is a plaque, or at least there was.
There was.
Uh, at the William Sealy School.
Yeah. Now, Mike, I don't know. But Mike, you gotta go back to third grade if you wanna win.
There you go.
Exactly. Um, I'm not sure, you know, maybe in the next year or so, we'll see it.
My two cents.
Yeah. And then, um, the last thing is, is I just want to acknowledge that this is Diane's. Last meeting.
Whoa.
Um.
We don't wanna acknowledge that.
I know, I know.
Ignore that completely.
Yeah, exactly. She's been with the town for twenty one years. Um, and is retiring and, you know, we are gonna miss her as a colleague. And. You know, as someone who is just so good at what she does.
Hmm.
She really is.
Mm hmm.
Zoning guru for sure.
You did good, kid.
Thank you, Diane.
This was your party, unfortunately.
And you're muted, Diane. Four and a half hours.
Part. If I was, Diane, if I was still in second grade, I'd vote for Crystal Lake for your name, but.
Okay. So are you having a party for that, um?
You won't, well, we're, we're gonna do something. We don't know what.
Mm hmm.
Maybe in the spring. You're muted, Diane.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um. When I, I, I wanted to just tell you, I went to Susan Sarah's service and when I talked to her son. He says, do you have time for me to tell you a zoning story? I said, sure. I don't know if you, any of you heard this, if he told you, but, um. He goes, my mom really wanted chickens. So last Christmas. I went out and I built, um, this really neat chicken coop, or I bought one that was really neat. And I gave it to her for Christmas. And I remember at that time, she, she had emailed me and she said, can you send me the chicken regulations? I said, sure, you know? So he goes, she got those regulations. And she realized that. She couldn't put the chicken coop on her property. And they kept going, but mom, it's your Christmas present, you have to put it on. No, 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 I was the one that did the chicken regulations. I can't put that on my property if it doesn't meet zoning. You refuse to put the chicken coop on her property. And get her chickens. And I said, well, what happened to him? He goes, well, I have it at my house now, and he's moving to Ledger or something. He goes, I'm gonna have ducks. The chicken coop's gonna get used for ducks, but that was so sad.
Yeah, true and honest right to the end, right?
I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is a zoning issue or not, but I'm buying eggs on Peak Watt Avenue. Well, it's possible. They can have chickens.
I thought you can have chickens. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I. I don't know if they, maybe they go to the store and buy eggs and then they put them in the, you know, along the road. At the sign. I don't know, maybe that's what they do.
Four hundred percent markup.
No, I, I think it's.
In the city, they're, they're considered pets.
Yeah.
The chickens are.
Yeah.
I thought you were allowed to have chickens.
Yeah, you can have chickens, but you can only have at your house, if your lot is a certain size, you can only have four. And then your coop only can be twenty five, I think, square feet or something like that. It was probably bigger than that. That's.
It was probably the coop, yeah, not the chicken.
Because I think she could have met the setbacks. I don't know exactly what was wrong, but she refused to put it on her property.
That's what CBA is for.
Well, plus if you go and buy chickens, you must buy five.
Oh, really?
That's a state law, yeah. You can't. Sorry.
One goes in the pot and four go in.
Yeah, right. Well, that's why when Johnson's has some, had them in the, uh, for sale this. Went, uh, spring, they did have a sign up that you had to buy so many, and I didn't realize why. That's why.
Okay.
So they don't do, they don't do well if there's a one or two, they just don't, uh.
So you need to change the regulations then, because I think it's for our regulations.
Well, there you go.
That was very clever. If we don't want chickens.
So we have a lot of chickens, you can't use. All right.
Well, thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Good luck, Diane, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Deb?
Nope, that's it.
All right, and we have the ASP report. And. I guess that's it. If no one has anything else, I'll make a motion then for adjournment. For a second. We have a second.
Not gonna take me long to fall asleep.
Actually, I thought it might go later than this.
Yeah.
Well, the next meeting will be, I hope not this long, but there'll be a number of applications on, so.
Oh, I was counting, I figured the public might speak.
Right.
Lucky there.
Hmm, we are.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.